Okay.
The flag.
Oh, yeah.
Just because.
No, no, it makes sense.
Because.
I don't know if she's coming forward or not.
Krista.
Try to get going. Thank you.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Volusia County School Board Workshop Work Session. Today is Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, and it is now one oh six P M. In just a moment, I'm going to ask that you stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and reflection. So at this time, will you please stand and join me? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. I'm going to take just a moment to introduce those that are here with me. Starting over here on my far left, we have Mrs. Donna Brosmer, representing District Four. Then Mrs. Krista Goodrich, representing District Two, followed by Dr. Gilbert Evans, who is our school board attorney. Moving over to the far right, I have Ms. Celeste Gilmore, our agency clerk, followed by Ms. Jessie Thompson, representing District Three. Then we have Mr. Ruben Cologne, our vice chair, representing District Five. Then our wonderful superintendent, Dr. Carmen Balgobin, and I am Jamie Haynes. I am the chair and I represent District One. We have a very heavy agenda for today. So board members, I would like to, because there are so many items on here, there are six items, I would like to change the order in which we're going to hear the items so that in the event we run out of time before the four thirty P M consent agenda board meeting, we could push off one or possibly two items to the next workshop. Because there are things here that I know you're going to have questions about, and I want you to be able to have the opportunity to get your questions answered. So we're going to stay with the first item being two point zero one. In just a moment, we'll bring up Gray Robinson. Then we're going to, the second item will be three point zero one, the half cent sales tax. I'm going to move four point zero one down to the last item of the day. And then, so we will, the third item will actually end up being four point zero two, the gifted update. Five point zero one will move down to the fifth place, which is the elementary vape program. And six point zero one will move up to the fourth place, which is the non-disclosure agreement discussion. So the order, once again, will be Gray Robinson, half cent sales tax, gifted update, non-disclosure agreement discussion, then if we still have time, the elementary vape program, and last career in technical education. So I wanted everyone sitting here to know that we were changing the order. And that's the way, because during the agenda conference, everyone assured me, oh, no, each presentation can happen in thirty minutes, along with the questions built into the thirty minutes. And I kept saying, I didn't think we could quite pull that off, because some of these items have more than seventy pages in their presentation or in their books.
Let's do it.
So we're going to do it. So we're going to start, and up first is Gray Robinson with the two thousand and twenty-four twenty-five legislative presentation. Dr. Balgobin.
Yes, thank you. We would like to welcome Mr. Chris Carmody, our legislative liaison, along with, from Gray Robinson, along with Ms. Kim McDougall. Thank you for being here in Volusia County and for providing us with our presentation about current legislation. Welcome.
Good afternoon. As said, stated, Chris Carmody, Kim McDougall with Gray Robinson. We're happy to be here today. We've had a great partnership with the school board, and it was a great session, generally speaking. We'll get into some of that and go over why it took a hundred and five days to bring it in for a landing and everything in between. We might, we might be one of those presentations, that's us, look how great we look, Kim. The, we, we have one of those presentations that have all those pages. They are available publicly, and so you'll hear me say this probably a couple times. We're going to try to go through these quickly, because, one, you and your staff are very familiar, especially with the education bills of what's been happening, because you guys are already implementing them. We've done a couple briefings already with, with your high-level staff since session, because it ended late and we're already started on what's going on for two thousand and twenty-six. So I'm not trying to be rude if I blur through these, but you're not being rude if you stop me and say, tell me more about that. We want to help answer any questions you have. So with that, I'm going to jump in and try to move as quickly as I can and answer any questions. With any legislative session, we think it helps to kind of understand who is in the room, where it happens, as they say, right? Hundred and twenty member House, forty member Senate, as you can see in that little bullet there. Twenty-seven in the Senate, twenty-seven Republicans, ten Democrats, one N P A. That was a late-session N P A, where the Democratic minority leader switched to N P A. And then there were two open seats. One for someone who ran for Congress and one for Central Florida senator who passed away. And then in the House, similar numbers with the supermajority percentage-wise, eighty-six Republicans, thirty-three Democrats, and one open seat. Like I said, both with supermajorities. This is a slide that we've had to change constantly in the last sixty days, but we think it's finally going to stay this way, at least until the elections next year, and we'll see what happens. But this is the office of the governor. The person in, you all know the top-left, Governor DeSantis, Lieutenant Governor Collins. If we gave this presentation when session ended, would not be up there, he'd be in the Senate slide. But he was appointed by the governor, gosh, what, about a month ago or a month and a half ago, to, to replace Jeanette Nunez, who took the F I U post as president, as lieutenant governor. One of the worst-kept secrets in all of politics is the lieutenant governor strongly considering running for actual governor. He may announce next month, we'll see. And then that bottom, that bottom row there, Mary Claire Hubbard, Legislative Affairs Director, think lobbyist for the governor, works with the legislature, Jason Weida, who's Chief of Staff, and then Lita Kelly, Director of Office and Policy Budget. That's the governor's sort of, I call it the wonks, the ones who look at all those bills, especially these education bills, and try to digest it, as well as budget issues and give recommendations to the, the governor's team on what to do. She previously served as Chief of Staff for F D O T. And on the right, you have the cabinet. The one consistent there from the election was Ag Commissioner Wilton Simpson. As you all know, Attorney General James Othmeyer was appointed right before President Trump was inaugurated, when Ashley Moody resigned to take the Senate position. And then Blaise Engolia was more recently appointed at the end of the extended session to be CFO. And if you didn't know his name before he was appointed, I am certain you know it now, he's been barnstorming the state, talking about the Doge office and property taxes. The Florida House, this, they're entering, this was their first term, the twenty-six will be their final year in this cycle, with Danny Perez as the speaker, he's an attorney out of South Florida. You also have Wyman Duggan, who's the Pro Tem Finance and Tax Director, Lawrence McClure, Budget Chair. Bottom row, Sam Garrison is the Rules Chair and Speaker Designate. That's probably the most important part of that title, Speaker Designate. The session that's coming up is going to be where his power starts to grow a little more, as he's going to rise into power in the twenties, after the twenty-six elections. And then Fentress Dresko, Minority Leader out of Tampa, strong leader, even though they, they have a superminority, if you want to look at it from that lens. She's a very impactful leader for that caucus and can get a lot done. A lot of people think she'll be on the shortlist for one of the gubernatorial offices on the Democratic side in twenty-six, although she did announce recently she's going to run for Senate, so that maybe is where she's going to go. And then, over here in the Senate, you have Ben Albritton out of the South Central Florida, think Highland County, Polk County area. He's a farmer with some insurance in his background, and that will be trend, and you'll understand why, as far as some of his priorities. Ed Hooper, the Budget Chair out of Pinellas County, previously served in the House, previous to that, he was a City Commissioner, and previous to that, he was a fireman, so he's had a long career of public service. Jim Boyd is the minority, uh, majority leader, excuse me, and will be the Senate President following Ben Albritton after this next election cycle. Again, this all assumes that the Republicans maintain control after that cycle. Nearby, Jason Broder is the President Pro Tem, he's based out of Seminole County. And then Rules Chair is Kathleen Pasodomo, who is the immediate past Senate President and Minority Leader Lori Berman, who's had that role for less than four months, as I said, Jason, I didn't say the name, Jason Pizzo was State Senator, maybe day forty-eight, I feel like, day forty-nine, announced on the Senate floor, I'm leaving the Democratic Party to be an N P A. And so by the next day, the Senate Democrats had appointed Lori as their new leader. All right, future leaders just kind of helped give you the roadmap. Because of term limits, we generally have an idea of who's going to be the next in their classes. As we already mentioned, Sam Garrison. Jennifer Kennedy will take over in two thousand and twenty-eight, historic for a couple reasons, believe it or not, given how historic Polk County is, they do after, they do call it Imperial Polk County, after all. They've never had a presiding officer, they've had a couple Budget Chairs and Rules Chairs, but never a presiding officer. So that'll be the first from Polk County, and probably most notably in the House, the first female Speaker ever in that chamber. And then after soon-to-be Speaker Kennedy, you have Mike Redondo out of South Florida, who was, as of June thirtieth, was given that appointment for the twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-two years. As I, we mentioned in the Senate, Jim Boyd, following him will be Jane Trumbull, who's out of the Panhandle, and not up there, but it's largely believed, don't want to jinx it, but our own here, Tom Leek, is expected to be that next slide. Some of the, in the Senate, they don't do it quite like the House officially, so it'll be sort of spoken about, but never officially acknowledged until you get a little closer, but that's about where we are, and we'll knock on wood and hope that stays the same. We like working with him. All right, so leading into this session, you, if you didn't notice, I bet you do, because y'all, you have no choice but to be political animals, because you've run for office, and the school board is always part of the game of football in Tallahassee. There was a little tension pre-session, you might have noticed that, right? As the, the President was about to be sworn in, our governor called for a special session and wanted it to address, you can see up there, immigration, condo law reform, hurricane relief, and the education, or the petition drives for constitutional ballots. Almost immediately, the House and Senate said, no, thank you, and I'm, those are my words, those are a lot nicer than the words they used. And so we went into Special Session A, as they called it, gavelled out, they called Special Session B, passed what they called the Trump Act, it was an acronym, dealing with immigration. The governor made it very clear he was going to veto that, which he did, and they went into Special Session C, which was, I guess you could call it the Trump Act, with some revisions on that, so that all sides could get along on that. And they hit the ground running, immigration was a topic that was then and now, as you probably have been tracking over the summer, very, very important to certainly our executive branch and the legislature as well. But this kind of started what, if you didn't see it coming, you knew then, was going to be a bit of a chaotic session, right? The House and Senate were definitely being a little more vocal in the checks and balances with the governor, and the governor was being vocal right back. And so that led to some chaotic moments for Kim and I to deal with, but I think in the end, it all worked out, just took us a hundred and five days to get there. In the, in the midst of that, oh, I, I get this slide, Kim, thanks, all right, yeah, no. You might have heard about Hope, Florida. Interestingly enough, if you ask some of your constituents, I bet they never heard about this, this, this entity, but in the political world, it became very much a hot topic. There was a lot of House hearings in the House Health and Human Services Appropriations Committee dealing with this over some donations it received from a settlement in the state. I bring this up because that added further to the tensions, right? There'd be a hearing in the House, by the end of the day, there'd be a tweet or an actual press conference comment from our governor, and then there'd be more comments back from someone in the House leadership, sometimes in the Senate, to which we were all trying to, if you've seen the Charlie Day meme from It's Always Sunny, you know, trying to piece together all the clues on the board to figure out what can we do and what can't we do, as all this chaos is occurring. But that sort of was leading into what was session. The House further continued their Doge efforts with the Department of Management Services when they, when they could not find a bunch of their fleet vehicles. Good news, they did find them, by the way, this summer, that, that, when they actually dug in and got in there, they found them, but that kind of further emphasized some of the chaos and the friction between the two chambers. So that's what we had going in. Quickly go through these. Lot of bills filed, decent number passed, that's about on par, most signed by the governor, eleven vetoed, and three-pocket vetoed, that's an interesting, interesting thing this governor hasn't done yet, where he didn't sign it, he didn't veto it, he just let it become law without any action, sort of let, they call it pocket veto or desk veto, or desk approval, where it just stays in it, doesn't do anything with it. One of them was on the non-compete's on works, for folks who are leaving their job. Appropriations filed, about the same, House and Senate, that's to be expected. And then we'll jump in here, and then we'll go into some education issues. To help understand, you got to kind of look at some of the priority issues of those players we were talking about, as you see those slides. Every session, they're required to pass a budget, as we said, it took a hundred and five days. They almost always do a tax package, at least in Kim and I's tenure, they've always done a tax package. There's almost always something about public safety, so you can expect packages on that. And then workforce training, the last five to six years, has been very much an emphasis in both chambers. So those are bills you knew going in, even if they couldn't get along, they're going to find a way to get those done, because they know back home, their constituents want to see those, and of course, the budget, they have to pass, because that's the constitution required. Beyond that, that's where you have some divergence. The governor leading in had a couple things that were priority, and one, he was clear early, and he's definitely clear now, was property tax relief. He didn't get what he wanted out of session, he wanted that ballot initiative this session, it didn't happen, then he also asked for a thousand-dollar property tax rebate for all homesteaders, House wasn't going to give him that either. They, they punted, and we'll get into tax package and talk about it, but they, they kind of punted on a couple of those and found common ground. Illegal immigration, early and often, you've heard Alligator, Alcatraz, right, deportation depot, I heard Panhandle padlock is coming soon. This is going to be a common theme, where the state's resources, working with the feds, are going to deal with illegal immigration. Continuing to lead, right, he's going into his second-to-last session, he's got a lot of accomplishments, right? Those first, first six years, the governor did a lot, which probably led for him running for president. So his, so light on priorities and more, and just continuing to lead, right? He wants Florida to be number one or top five in all those metrics we care about, right? Tax, tax structure, business environment, you name it. And then cementing and defending legacy, right? He's, if he fought for it in those first six years, he's going to fight really hard these next two years to make sure whatever those things are stay in place. All right, Senate, you can see there, rural renaissance, this was a big deal, certainly would affect parts of Volusia County, areas where Senator Albritton's from is rural, where he wanted to take a big infusion of cash, as he would say, to make sure that the rural areas has the exact same opportunities as the urban areas, right? So some of it was just red tape and bureaucracy, like those kind of statute fixes, but a lot of it was going to be cash infusion. One of the first bills passed by the Senate, as expected, and the give-and-take between House and Senate in any session, it was held by the House for a while, kind of, sort of hold, held hostage, we always joke, up there, until they can get what they want. Unfortunately, with all the back and forth over the tax package and other things, this fell by the wayside. He's already announced he's going to come back with it this next session, so you'll see that again. Florida citrus, again, he's got a ag citrus background, he wanted to do something about the canker and greening in our state, and he was able to get that done in the budget, about ninety-two million dollars year-over-year increase in research funding for citrus and canker, or greening and canker and citrus funding. And then empowering members, right? In the Senate, especially those last two years, with the governor probably being the peak of his powers, the Senate probably was doing a little more like, whatever you want, we're going to do it from the top down. This year, it's been, you guys do whatever you want, I'm not going to put the thumb on the scales. And we saw it in real time, there was a couple bills that failed in committee, never happens in the Senate, right? Usually they'll just temporarily postpone it, or they just won't even hear the bill, but actually voted down five-four, four-three in committee. That's, that's very rare. But part of it is, the President said, this is your Senate too, I'm not going to tell you how to vote, you vote how you want, and we're going to see how it all shakes out, which also, again, created some of that fun chaos. On the House side, sales tax reduction, you, you definitely heard this, this made headlines. The Speaker wanted to go from six to five-point-two-five percent on our sales tax. tax. That didn't, it passed the House, it never really went anywhere in the Senate. They tried to put it in the tax package to 5.75, when the Governor heard about it and others, he said he would veto it, and the Senate kind of backed out of that deal. So will he come back with that next session? We'll see, but that was one of his priorities, didn't quite make the cut. But his second priority did, he wanted to have a spending cut. And the general theme when we get in the budget was they wanted to spend less, or at least be flat year-over-year. Not so much for revenues, as you all know, you see it across the board, sales tax, property tax, you name it. Revenues are continuing to be in the upward trajectory, but there's some concern of expenses coming, whether it's because population growth, or just inflation, or you name it. They wanted to make sure the budget was, had a pretty good reserve fund in place. And then targeted repeal of tort reform. You probably, for your businesses or anyone that worries about torts, there hasn't, there wasn't a more successful two-year term than Renner and Pasodomo, the House and Senate the previous two years, as far as calling back on torts in the state. Speaker Perez, I wouldn't call him tort-friendly, but I would also say that he, sort of like Ben Albritton, was going to let bills move in his chamber, that maybe they didn't move in previous years. And so some bills moved on targeted repeal of tort reform, they didn't make it to the finish line, but I think he's already signaled in '26, he's going to let those bills move again and see where they go. So those are those. And I'm going to quickly do the budget, and then we're going to jump into education. So as I mentioned, they were going to cut the budget, or at least go flat, ended up cutting. That's a joke slide, obviously. It took them, cut a few extra days to load that budget, but here's where we landed here. Thanks for the laugh. All right. 115.1 billion, you can see the pie chart with the slides, no surprise in a state of our size, healthcare, massive chunk of the budget. And then K-12, 20.9 billion, that's the next biggest part, and then higher ed, and then you go down the line. Also, while it's not necessarily directly impactful, but the transportation economic development, 17.9 billion, again, fully funding the road fund, that obviously allows both our residential and commercial traffic to flow better in our state. There was a time where they didn't always fully fund that. So budget highlights, you can see here, per student spending up 1.59%, some jobs eliminated, that's the easiest way to cut the funding, it's just the jobs that haven't been filled, they cut them. Sadowski Trust Fund, that was fully funded, although that was touch and go for a while, as they were trying to figure out what to do with the budget. 800 million for Everglades spending, and then it was about 3.2% less spending than the previous year. Big-ticket items, I covered some of these, Visit Florida, fully funded at 80 million, 250 million for Rural and Family Lands Protection. The Budget Stabilization Fund, that ultimately did get vetoed, but that was part of the deal they cut at the end, to put more in reserves. And they did pay down some of the state debt, and then Hometown Heroes Down Payment Assistance Program, they put another 50 million into that. And then here's the tax package. It's about 2.4 billion, that should say B, not million. So one of it was the business rent tax, both state and local, that was a permanent repeal, that had been coming for a long time. Huge win, especially for small businesses, very few of them own their property, they usually lease it, and they pay the taxes on that. So a big win for them. Repeal of the aviation fuel tax, you could see the back-to-school sales tax holiday is now permanent, and it's every August, month-long, so that's hopefully helpful to a lot of our families here, both in Lusia and the other 66 counties. There's a couple changes on tourist development tax, not, nothing significant, but a little on the coastal side. And then you can see some of the Freedom stuff, like on bike helmets and other things, hunting and fishing supplies. And then NASCAR's down the road, although this one affects Homestead Miami, some discounts on some of the major event ticket prices, and our state parks. So I'm going to hand it over to Kim to kind of jump in a little bit on the budget side of K-12, and we'll start moving through these.
Well, thank you for that PTSD presentation.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, my God, it just keeps coming back. Thank you so much. So then this year, if you know, public schools, you were probably felt you were level-funded or a little less, but there was great conversation last session about, how do we make it, how can the state make it where districts can better predict their budgets? Right now, because the scholarships are going through the districts, it's tough on you, right? We're still looking for, what, fourth CAUC? We're still looking for some other buckets of money from the state. But the good news is, the House made major steps last year. I was really hoping the Senate would take their package. I was hoping, in an ideal world, I would love for the House to have taken the Administrative Efficiency Bill 166, and the Senate taking all the hard work the House did on making the budget more transparent and reliable for school districts. But at the end of the day, because by day 99, everything was an issue, right? So I'm hoping good components from those two bills come back up. And I think, from what we're hearing, what we saw last year, remember, once the Governor did his vetoes, the state budget was smaller than the prior year. So everyone, for purposes of planning, I think your district staff already know this, it's going to be about the same. I don't see any huge infusion of money into public schools, but I also see them working on making it better, tracking students, identifying students on scholarship, and making sure that that system is a lot better. And I think they may do some categorical increases. You can see last year, I kind of, to me, I think it's flat, because the cost of increase of everything going up, it was a, it's a flat budget. This is the non-FEFP, the Florida Safe Schools Canine Program, that's very interesting, that was past President Pasodomo's big project that she started, the mentoring program's good. School recognition's still hanging around, that's been around for like 20 years, right? And Coach Aaron Feis, we've grown a few names over the years for the Guardian Program, 6.5 million. So you can kind of see the things that were funded outside of, the important thing is school harding, 20 million. We know we need, we know we need more money for school harding, right? You can never do enough for school safety. So hoping and thankful the legislature keeps investing in that. Line item vetoes, that's always a cry day for lobbyists.
There's some crying.
There's some crying, but not unexpected, right? So it was a total of 1.35 billion. Do you want to talk about any of the big things?
Yeah, I mean, one of those was the Budget Stabilization Fund, and part of that tax package, how they negotiated at the end, was the Speaker said he wanted to increase our reserves, and part of that was there was a constitutional amendment they put on the ballot. And just to give you an idea of the friction here between the two, Senator Hooper, the Budget Chair who presented that constitutional amendment, Senate said, I need you to pass this, because we got to bring this in for a landing, but I sure hope the citizens voted down when it gets to the budget. So, because he doesn't want to tie the hands of future legislatures with having to put another 250 or 750 million away. Fun politics we were dealing with there. That ultimately got vetoed by the Governor, no surprise there, it was a priority of the Speaker's. As he said, they already have a lot in reserves, so that he wasn't really interested in going after some of that. And then, you know, as Kim said, it was definitely less last year, and that's what we're hearing going into this year, is that it'll be flat at best. But, you know, if the projections keep going, and the revenue collections keep going up, they'll have no choice but to probably spend a little more, because it's all sitting there, and they can only put so much in reserve. You've heard a lot of members even say, like, how much is, I mean, right now, we could survive, to put it in perspective, and then we'll go in these policy bills. I think it was like 12 million, billion, excuse me, in reserves. That's like two hurricanes and a COVID. We could survive between now and next budget cycle. So we're doing, we're doing fine as far as reserves go at the moment.
Okay, so Chair Haynes, now this portion will take me about an hour and a half, is that okay? I'm just kidding. Like Chris said, all the slides, all the PowerPoint, your staff and your superintendent.
I'm smiling when we leave, Kim.
Have been amazing, they've already implemented it. This is information for, if it comes up after their great lunch, you know, so it's there, please stop us, like Chris said. This is my passion, I think I'm the only, I was Chief of Staff for Governor Rick Scott before going to the private sector, I think I'm the only Chief of Staff in Florida that's ever been a, I was previously a certified teacher. So this is my heart. So it pains me to go quick, but I know you know this stuff, so I'll go quick. So hazardous walking conditions, just want to make sure students get safe to schools. There was some issue in St. John's County about where you're putting the bus stops, so that kind of gave information to your staff on where you can put the bus stops. Children with developmental disabilities, Senator Harrell, she's been a huge champion, she keeps going on and on with expand services and funding for children with autism and other developmental disabilities, improving early intervention, school readiness. So she was very thorough and thoughtful in this and created a program at the University of Florida. Initiative efficiency, this is my sad, sad bill.
Can you go back to that one? I have one question on there.
Okay.
The last line about adding the ASD Training to Educators Certificate Renewal Requirements. So when does that go into, did it go into effect on July 1st, or are we still waiting on further direction?
I think you're still waiting on further direction, your staff may know, I don't know that exact one, so. Yeah, because only it goes into effect July, and then the agencies, because I worked in agencies forever. It takes them a while to actually implement the laws that go into effect at a certain date.
Because that's the only one, I mean, I knew it was in there, but I hadn't heard anything yet, that's why I was asking.
That's why.
All right, thank you.
Glad to.
I'm hoping a lot of this passes, right? There's just good things. School districts, like, I want every school district to be Chick-fil-A, I want the parents lined up around the corner coming to you because you're the best. However, there's things you want to do to be the best, but you can't, because there's regulations and requirements that you have to do. And so I'm hoping that the House takes up, whether it's instructional personnel, whether it's how long it takes a teacher to be certified, whether it's reporting requirements, like free up the school districts, give you more freedom to do what you want, what's best for your students.
I will state, that was, that was the most heartbreaking, that that didn't pass, that nothing.
I cried.
Nothing in there passed, and yet, there were things in there that would have been so beneficial.
Right, and, and the thing about it is, there was no natural opposition to most things in that bill. But you're elected politicians, so it's a process, right? The House, the Senate, the Governor's office is a three-legged stool. So I'm hoping some of this comes back, we'll see if the Senate, I'm not sure they'll put it all in one big bill, it has like a, hey, look at, I'm all here. Maybe we'll see pieces in different Senate bills to get some of them across the line. So there's different strategies, I think.
Do I remember correctly that there was no House sponsor, or was there ultimately a House sponsor for this one?
There was none. There were pieces that were put in certain bills, but then at the end of the day, the big education trains, like 1105 and others, lots of things, but not what we wanted.
Okay, thank you.
Again, there's no known opposition to most of the things in there, except for about high school graduation requirements and the testing in the 10th grade with Algebra I and intercourse exams. That is like 10% is contested, the rest of the 90%, it's just the right thing to do for the students.
But I think politically, there had to have been opposition, they just didn't articulate in order to not have a House sponsor.
The willingness of wins, does that make sense? And maybe other things are traded? None of this is clean, it's like making sausage. I love it. This is, I think, my 38th session. Normally, when something doesn't make sense, it comes back to money. But this isn't money. So, okay.
Something else.
So what is it? Yeah, but you're right. But we'll be back there fighting for it again, because it's the right thing to do for our kids. Student participation in inter-scholastic extracurricular support, we've seen year after year, kind of making sure that whatever choice a student makes, they have an opportunity to participate in extracurricular sports. Special observances, we saw, we saw a lot of special observances and recognition bills this year, the first one, it's just so sad we even have to do this, but it's the right thing to do. Ventinal awareness and Education Day, ventinal is just so bad. Holocaust from Memorial Day, that's an amazing bill, well, I hope no one ever forgets the Holocaust. False reporting, increases penalties for individuals who make false or malicious emergency calls. That should reduce the number of threats you get that aren't real, right? So I'm sure your staff, making sure students are aware of the increased penalties, right? This should help. Kids are kids, but don't be, no, no. Well, that's a no-no bill. Middle school and high school start times, that bill changed, right? Remember the previous Speaker did a bill, we had to start, you were going to have to start at a certain time for elementary and middle school, and then this, now you have to send in some reports of DOE to school times, as long as you reach out to your community.
We are fortunate that we are the one district that was already in line with that, and have been for several years. So we kind of, I mean, we know it existed, but we ignored it, because we do elementary, then high school, and then middle school, and we already met the times.
You're lucky. I remember Chris telling me that, but this was a huge, oh, my gosh.
I know. For other places, it was awful.
A couple a lot of bandwidth. This one and the school safety bill that we'll talk about, those are the two biggest bandwidth bills. 443 clarifies operational rules, expands enrollment options and strengthens administrative fairness for charter schools, that's a big charter school bill. Every year, there's a charter school bill, right? Charter schools, charter schools want to be more like private schools, public schools want to be like, more like charter schools, so you almost see, like Mission Creep, but I'm like, why don't we just do what's best for the kids, and give everybody more flexibility, and at the end of the day, you'll have more students. Disability History and Awareness Instruction.
Did you have a question?
I was going to say, I think on that one, the thing that jumped out the most is, is that we have to open up our public schools for them to come and participate in sports, and they have to be given
Last bullet.
The same rights as everybody else.
Yeah, Kim said it best, the mission creep, you're seeing it there, right? It's now, you know, sort of, okay, sure, but, but you have to let here, here, and there, and it's, you know, again, going back to the kids, what's in the best interest, but it's not always easy for the school districts. And so we keep, we pay attention to that, and frankly, your delegation here, and, and others across the state, you know, as we work together, we can look at ways to make sure that, no different than the scholarships, right, to make sure if it's done, it's done in a fair and equitable manner, so it's not this massive imposition to the school districts while trying to implement a law that they think is important, right?
Disability History and Awareness Instruction, bill requires K-33 to include lessons on bullying, physical disabilities, mandates autism instruction 46, learning impairment 79, and other intellectual disabilities for grades 10 through 12. It's just, it's an awareness issue. Transportation 462, this, this has to do with that whole thing where you can put cameras on your buses, whether it's, you know, in the speed zone or on school buses, they made some changes to the law on how providers get paid. Gulf of America, wasn't that the first bill that was passed and signed?
I think it might have been the first.
And remember, at first, we thought, oh, my God, we're going to have to go back and change all the instructional materials and do Gulf of America, but then it was like, no, 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 you've already purchased the books, you got Gulf of America, that was a big cost avoidance there. Could have gone either way. Diabetes management in schools, you are not nurses, you're giving information about diabetes management, making sure that you have glucagon, however you guys decide to do it.
My only thing on that one, though, is they're still stating that we have to come up with the, what has to be administered, and the need it needs to be administered, and they didn't fund that piece for us.
That's right, and it says May, and it authorizes you to do it.
Yes.
So because they don't require you to do it, the optically, they don't see it as a mandate, so it's your choice if you want to do it, or if you want to get a company partner, or see if there's a partnership you can have, or your hospital, or whoever. But you're right.
There was discussion, I know at the beginning, that it was going to be a must or shall, and it was never going to see the light of day, or at least not get to the finish line. So the May is to help you, sort of, if you want to do it, go for it, but that's a fair point. Because once you're in the ballgame, now you got to deal with it.
Thank you.
Apprenticeship and pre-apprenticeship program, I see like, every year, we're seeing more apprenticeship programs, the same thing, we're bringing companies to Florida, we have to make sure that the folks are trained, so what's the best way to do it? And for a while, Florida was really losing apprenticeships, and so now we're trying to get them back, so we can lure more companies to come to Florida. Childcare and early learning providers, we all know, what's our greatest ROI? The earlier that you teach the kids. And I know a lot of VPK, funding VPK, it's like a 600 million impact statewide, so they don't do that. So as much as we can do for early learning, and get the students that come, no matter where they choose to go, better prepared, they have a better chance with their own education. School social workers, you would think, this is, I think this is year three it took, right? So you have school social workers that were required to do, demonstrate mastery of general knowledge and subject area knowledge for educator certifications, they're not certified teachers, but this was like back in the 70s, when it was like, if you were in the school, you had to go, and whether you're a school counselor or a school social worker. So they're out, the school side college just want to keep their requirements, school counselors are looking at changing their requirements this year. Just trying to make sure with the workforce, and I think we have a shortage of school counselors, right? So Type 1 Diabetes Early Detection Program requires the Department of Health to distribute, you have to do it, but they have to make it, again, as a partnership with Department of Health, but you have to provide information on Type 1 Diabetes. Educated Preparation, Rep. Rizzo and Snyder, 875. Oh, my gosh, this bill is all over the place. DOE must convene a work group to revise the Florida Educator Accomplished Practices, that's kind of done on a regular basis anyway, like every 10 years. The State Board must adopt Uniform Core Curriculum for Teacher Preparation Programs, the Clinical Educators and Mentors, the Florida Center of Teaching Excellence, additional provisions, districts must set minimum qualifications for part-time, non-degreed, fine and performing arts teacher. Every once in a while, you see like a little rabbit trail. It's very important, but you're looking at everything, and then you're like, oops, what's that issue? Who was that important to? EKGs for student athletes, we knew this was coming, it's been out there, there for years, it's all about student safety, participating in athletics. School readiness program, they keep, they expand special needs eligibility and funding for school readiness providers who meet training and program standards, they're trying to give incentives for those programs that show that their students are ready when they leave, they test them when they come in, they test them in the end. You guys are all familiar with that. This is a train, a train, a train, a train. Hope you like trains. I think there's like five different bills in here. Expands eligibility for the Florida Academic Scholar requirements to include the Advanced Placement Capstone Designation, and that's really cool, increases eligibility and means a volunteer hour requirements for the Florida Gold Seal Vocational. You can just see, it's a, it's a, not a dump, it's the inclusion of very key education issues, requires dual enrollment agreements to address scheduling changes and increase access. You can see the Bright Futures Program.
Except two slides. Except two spots.
And it just keeps going and going. There's stuff in there in charter schools. There's, probably the biggest conversations I've heard around is the elimination of the Certificate of Completion. That's been a big issue statewide. So remember, that was originally Representative Valdez from Tampa, former school board member from Hillsborough County Public School District, right? And so when she testified, she would just say, it was a piece of paper that meant nothing. So I had lots of conversations with her. She was very passionate about this. And so when I talked to the Senate President's Office and the House, I was like, okay, what's the deal? People are gonna get upset, especially now the, you see, parents are upset because they used to get a piece of paper. Now they don't. Apparently, what was, I was told what was happening is districts were treating students that had a CO, a Certificate of Completion differently across the state. Some districts were very good at saying, here's your Certificate of Completion, and here's all your services you're eligible for. You can go to this school. You can go to this virtual. You can do this, but don't stop with this piece of paper. Other school districts just gave the piece of paper. So the intent was to make it where the DOE makes sure all students get the same information about their potential next steps and opportunities because they have a Certificate of Completion. So it was to uniform the information for the students and their parents with the COC. That's what I was told. So that seems to make sense, but there are still some people upset. I would not be surprised if that didn't come back.
Go ahead, Ms. Goodrich.
So are these students gonna be getting anything at graduations? Do they get nothing? I have an issue with that.
I have an issue with this.
I anticipate this may come back. So I don't know if y'all are looking at something for your platform, or if FSBA is gonna do it, or FADS is gonna do it. But I see this issue coming back because the individuals, the ESC student network out there is not happy.
Yeah, I mean, you saw, I mean, what, around mid-July, right? When some reality set in on this issue, you saw there was a lot of traffic, and a lot of legislators had to go in and try to explain away. And it was, no matter how much there was explaining going on, they couldn't quite get there because, as Kim just very well showed you, there's no certificate, right? And it's gone now. So including our local delegation, assuming this is part of your platform, you know, I think between Senator Leake and some of the others, we've got folks of influence. We need to work hard on this because there's some heartburn on this one and definitely some regret. There's some legislators that probably were sold this and were excited about it because they were sold the part of it that Kim was talking about, where kids are being just left on an island with a certificate and not told the other part of the story. And now that they're hearing back from a lot of parents and school districts, they're saying, oh. And that happens a lot during session, right? A lot, some of this stuff, as you know, this bill was, I'm trying to think where it was on the ping pong, but it was one of the last one to go through as far as, and there was a whole lot of back and forth on getting this done. And some stuff that was published, and they're on one-hour notice on those final days, where, you know, Kim and I, you worry about 76 pages, right? These amendments are 200 pages, and you're doing your best to see, did they slip anything in there? I don't know. And then you see a question asked on the floor, and you say, oh. But you know it's already too late to stop it unless, for some reason, like the whole base is gonna revolt, so.
You have great staff, and you guys have ideas if there's something like, as they want to get rid of the Certificate of Completion, like what's the suggestion for the piece of paper that you could give them? Where it's consistent across the state and it's meaningful to the student? Like, there's gotta be something, right?
We are actually discussing that tomorrow at FADS.
Wish I was there.
Let me just clarify, because I think I maybe heard it wrong. So ESC kids that don't meet the traditional definition of graduation in the state of Florida get nothing for completing high school?
I was only referring to the COC. If you don't meet the requirements, you don't meet the requirements, right? It's a standard high school diploma. It has market value, and there's not a whole lot of sway on that.
But there's nothing, no alternative?
Not that I'm aware of. Now, your people might. Your staff, are your staff aware?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe there's an ESC?
This was the most heartbreaking piece, I felt, that came out. Because we know that there are some students with unique abilities, and they have made progress, and they've learned life skills and things like that. And the fact that they'll now walk and not receive anything, I just.
Maybe they will. Maybe your staff.
Our students will still receive the bonus in our access courses for our unique abilities. And then also, we have not used the Certificate of Completion in quite some time because of the technical barriers.
You guys are in a better spot.
You're still getting, okay.
Are you back? Are you present again?
I am. I was really upset.
That's something, that's something, that's something you might want to take to FADS and share because I don't think everyone is in your place. That would be helpful to other districts. Workforce education. They had the workforce grant access. Last charter schools, again, to apply directly for workforce development, capitalization incentive grant program. Remember when that started? It was 100 million. This year, it was 40 million. That's a, before, they had to go through their school district. That's a great program because you could do CTE startup dollars. Human trafficking awareness. This is so sad we even need a bill. It's very important. That's good. We'll go to the next one. It's just sad to even talk about. This is another, this is another train, right? 1255. Updates education policies. Updates opioid antagonist definition. Requires intervention. Allows expulsion extensions based on threat management. Requires parent notification and eligibility for New Worlds Program. Improves record transfers. So a lot of stuff is in 1255 that your staff are aware of. School district reporting requirements. Modifies reporting, self-reporting, and background screening for school employees. Adopt, we all know about the background screening in the ACHA clearinghouse. Students enrolled in dropout retrieval programs. Modifies accountability requirements for VIPS, for their virtual instruction programs. School safety. This is one that passed. We came back because everyone wants their school safe. But there were some things when districts were, when y'all were actually implementing it, you did the best you could. You did exactly what was required, but it didn't make sense. So went back, worked with, even though it was, went back and made some changes. And it was Senator Burgess, they were open to it, but it was a law enforcement supported every chain that was in the bill. Background screening of athletic coaches expands the requirement because of the ACHA clearinghouse. NFL access in public and charter schools is another. Government boards ensure the emergency action plan for NFL access for each student and effective and accessible at all times on campus. I'm sure you're already doing that. Cardiac emergencies require school districts to provide basic training and first aid. The EKG, first aid. Think you were probably already doing some of that.
That was a long time coming, that one. And then, so that was the Micro Machine Voice by Kim. She did such a great job getting there.
I almost gave you a heart attack. Other than that, we're doing good.
So a few others, just more to put on your radar that passed that you'll hear about if you haven't already. They did do a lot of on the constitutional amendment reform, and that is being challenged in the courts. There's always a First Amendment challenge whenever they do change anything on that. And it'll affect some of the petitions that are out there right now in the field. Fluoride ban. This got a lot of coverage in all the papers and blogs and whatnot, but they passed that. State parks, you might have heard of. Last summer, there was discussion of maybe putting golf courses in a state park down in South Florida, or pickleball, what have you. That obviously didn't go anywhere after there was both Republican and Democrat pushback, but they were able to put forward a law. Senator Gail Harrell led the way in the Senate. There was a lot of back and forth there, but essentially what the final law was is that it would, unless there is true, true consensus for whatever it is you're putting in that state park that wasn't there before, it's not gonna go in. Condo law reform. They're taking another bite at this apple. This is an issue that they did the right thing after Surfside and trying to react and do something to make sure that you never see another Surfside. But as we've seen, the echo of that is the increased costs for anyone that lives in a condo. And ever since then, they've been trying to both pull that back, but keep the safety parts. You know, that's a fine line to walk, right? They want to pull back the cost, but keep the safety in place. They took another crack at the apple, or bite at the apple this session. You saw the school start time repeal. We already covered that DOH package. Vaccine bans was in that. That's sort of the COVID stuff that they did two or three years ago, extending the bans on those vaccine requirements for businesses and pushed it out further. And then brownfields, if you're familiar with development in the state of Florida. Because taking care of our land and underground water and everything else wasn't always a priority. Districts, whether cities or counties, we have a lot of brownfields, as they're called. And so the state's been participating funding-wise as far as making it attractive for developers to go in, clean it, some of these superfund sites, clean them up, and then develop them, which is a great way to, you know, prevent us from having to go into some of our more natural wetland areas. So that was a good win for just in general Florida. Bills that failed, but we do think will be back. Property insurance, hemp regulation, e-verify. As you probably know, e-verify for private businesses is if you're below, if you're over 25 employees, and it was only for people that you hired since it went into effect two or three years ago. So the, almost 80% of the companies in Florida are 25 employees or less. So e-verify does not affect them. There's always talk of maybe putting that in place. College/university presidential searches. This got a lot of coverage after the bill failed because, obviously, there was a certain school in Gainesville that had a candidate that only had one finalist, and that finalist didn't get approved by BOG. So I think that will be back. Gun law changes. This is a constant ever since the Parkland tragedy. And they passed that legislation that put some bans on long-arm rifles and bump stocks. There's been folks that have moved to repeal it. And in every, in first couple of years, it didn't do much. But in the last couple of years, the House has always passed it. The Senate hasn't touched it. But you probably are very familiar with the recent first DCA ruling on open carry. And now open carry is, at least according to our Attorney General, and most of the sheriffs are abiding by that. Open carry is the law of the land now in the state. My guess is you'll continue to see more changes in the gun laws at two. One, because they're gonna have to now pass something because of open carry. The way Florida works, some of you probably, your legal staff probably knows, open carry and concealed carry were sort of intertwined in the statutes. And so by getting rid of the ban on open carry, you now have a bunch of loopholes like where certain buildings, and I'm not trying to freak anyone out, you couldn't have a concealed weapon, but you could have an open carry weapon. That seems like an odd, not meant to happen. And I'm talking government buildings or other public places. So they're gonna obviously address some of those CRAs. Most counties, especially urban areas, have, rely a lot on CRAs for development in the state. There was a bill that was gonna significantly overhaul that. It didn't make it to the finish line. There's a big DVPR deregulation bill that didn't make it to the finish line. And then, of course, sovereign immunity. It's been 11 years since the state has done anything when it comes to sovereign immunity. And so as a result, it's still right where it's at, at 200, 300,000. But every year that goes by, I think the drumbeat gets a little louder for folks to do something about it and increase the caps. Obviously, the trial bar, think about it, the billboard attorneys, as they're sometimes referred to, they're beating the drum pretty loudly to reform sovereign immunity. And what they want is to move it up into the million, 2 million range, which is maybe a bridge too far for a lot of folks. What we keep hearing is if they land that plane, they'll land it right in the middle, probably 400,000, 500,000 new caps, maybe six on the high end, to line it up with what would be basically the increase over time of costs of things over 11 years. It failed again, but it will be back next session. And like I said, every session we get further away from it, I think it makes it more likely they'll pass something just out of fairness, right? They feel like it's not fair that it's stuck at 200 and 300. So for your radar. Tort reform, I brought that up. Some of those died. And then a couple of issues to put on your radar, and we'd love to answer any more questions that maybe didn't pop up. I think redistricting is happening. You've been hearing a lot about that on Congressional. Let me be clear. You've heard President Trump say he wants it. You've heard the governor say that he wants it. And two things could happen, right? There's reapportionment, where we could get an additional seat. And President Trump has signaled that they may even go through that exercise and give us one extra seat. Many people believe that we were gonna get, instead of one, but two extra seats, what, five years ago? But the governor has signaled regardless of whether we, there's reapportionment with additional seats, he wants redistricting. He thinks the seats were drawn improperly because of COVID and all that, and we didn't have enough info. The House has said aside a committee. The Senate has not. Senate's been kind of crickets on that so far. But my guess, just given the fact that the guy in DC wants it, and I call it like the eighth law of physics. If you have a Republican president, your Republican governor, Republican legislature is likely gonna do what that Republican president wants you to do. I think it'll happen. You've heard a lot about vaccines. This is gonna have direct impacts on y'all. The Surgeon General of the state of Florida and the governors come out saying they want to pull back a lot of the requirements on vaccines. There was an immediate pushback from a lot of representatives and senators, Republican and Democrat, or at least a, I need to know more, and I need to see some studies kind of talk that you see. But I think it's gonna be pushed, and we'll see where it lands. Property tax, we've covered that already, but that drumbeat, and you hear Florida doze, you're gonna hear more and more and more of that. Social media. You know, a couple of weeks ago, there was an awful tragedy, you know, and a lot of it played out on social media. And I think, again, kind of going to the physics of how stuff gets done, you can't have an event like that that had the eyeballs of the entire country and not be surprised that legislation comes out of it. And one of the things will be in social media, so you'll see some impacts there as far as censor, not censor, real time, not real time. Royal Renaissance, we mentioned it. That will be back. And tort reform issues, we expect will be back. And when you do request a copy of these, I promise you, where that black rectangle is, there's some beautiful pictures Kim and I came up with to put in each one of these slides. Sorry, you don't get to see them. Couple of things to put on your radar. Obviously, this is top of mind for Kim and I. Committee weeks are gonna be here before you know it. In fact, two weeks from now. October 6th, we'll start. They go back-to-back in October, then November. Two weeks, December, two weeks, and then January 13th, they will be starting session. So we'll be right back at it with a wrap-up of, I hope, March 13th. Let's not have another 105 days.
I can just add, like, I think the top education issues that maybe we'll be facing this session, I think AI, artificial intelligence, is gonna be probably something on it. Remember, the White House came out with their executive order, or there's been chatter around here, to make sure the teachers are still the teachers in the classroom, and they're enhancing the teachers, but the AI is not the teacher, right? So I see something about that. Attendance. Remember, there was that chronic absenteeism bill last year and districts across the state define absenteeism differently. Scholarship student ID numbers, so we can track the students where they move easier. Overall, just funding the K-12 system. Are they gonna change the FEFP? Are they gonna put the scholarships like the Florida Virtual School, or the Florida Schools of Defense Blinds, where it gets its own number within the FEFP so it doesn't go through the districts? That'll be back. I think mental health. Remember, there was legislation that passed that OPAGA is gonna do a survey on mental health services. The legislature wants to make sure that the mental health allocation money is being used for services. We all saw what happened last year when there was a survey about the dual enrollment. Remember everything? We almost lost that money, that fight last year. So mental health services, looking at the impact of federal funding decisions. And then also, I anticipate something coming up about facilities and the use of facilities with the declining enrollment in the public school system. I just want to put those on your radar.
So, go ahead, Ms. Brosmer.
Just one broad question. Do you anticipate, has there been a thaw between the legislature and the governor to hopefully not have this session go like last session did?
We're gonna turn off the broadcast, right? And we can just be freely. No. Look, you know, depending on the day, I'll take this one. I'll take the bullets that I get for this, Kim, to spare you today. You know, it's tough to say. Some of this you can only base on public comments, right? And some of it you hear when we talk to members or folks on the governor's team. I don't think it's where it's at during session. That's good news. Has it been a full thaw? where it's at during session. That's, that's good news. Um, has it been a full thaw? Tough to say, right? Like you heard, it got fever pitch again when the speaker and a lot of his members were in the White House a couple of weeks ago. Uh, they had some, it was national, but a bunch of state legislative members from across the country. And then there was a whole lot of pictures of the speaker with the president walking down that hall, that outside hallway, what we see, right? And then immediately after, is the speaker being recruited to run for AG? Is he doing this? Which just stoked the flames of the, the speaker versus the governor kind of discussions. You know, election years tend to bring out the brighter side of folks, as, as I've noticed, right? Because most of these members, now, the speaker and the governor are both termed out, right? So maybe not them, but most of these members have to go home and run for reelection. Um, half the Senate, all the House members that aren't termed out. And so as a result, you see sort of people's sunnier disposition because they want to bring home nice things, not just chaos and, and bitterness, right? So maybe that's Pollyannaish, but it seems like every election year that the vetoes are a little less, um, the budget's a little rosier, um, because they don't want to go into, to, to the election season with just everyone mad at each other, right? Does the governor's last act as governor before he does whatever he does in the future, and I don't think we're expecting him to just ride off in the sunset. He has other goals and ambitions there. You know, does his last act a, as a governor just slashing and burning a budget and vetoing everyone's, you know, policy? Not great if you're trying to set yourself up for future success with these folks. So you tend to see people's better side. That said, I haven't heard of a clear thaw of like they're, they're hanging out now, but um, you know, one can hope.
Thank you.
For anyone watching, please don't get mad at me. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, and we appreciate the time that you took today to come and share this with us. And we appreciate all of the updates you give us throughout the year.
We hope next session ends a little earlier so we can do this presentation, you know, not, you know, a week before committees week start. We're, we're honored to be part of the team. We love working with y'all and your staff. And I was just talking with Board Member Brossmer, you know, when you're in Tallahassee, let us know. Obviously, you ha, you know your local delegation, and I'd be shocked if they don't open up their doors and greet you right away. But Kim and I and the rest of the team want to make sure anytime you're up there, even for a quick visit, it's productive and it helps both you and your, your district, um, and obviously advances our priorities. So thanks for letting us be a part of the team, and we hope.
Hour.
Right at an hour, I think. So, you know, could have been longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We are now moving on to item 3.01, the Half-Cent Sales Tax Project Oversight Committee 2025 Annual Report. Dr. Balgobin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Haynes. I would like to ask Mr. Cash, our Chief of Staff, along with Mr. Jake Lammers, our CPA from Charles Beloit and Associates, and also the members from our Oversight Committee to join us. They have a short presentation for us today on behalf of the Half-Cent Sales Tax Annual Report.
Oh, thank you.
I, I see Diane Smith, our wonderful, she serves on the committee. Would you like to join, or? I can't.
We can get another chair.
You sure?
I recognize them.
Okay.
You can pull another chair.
Well, we have two more. We would need two more chairs.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
We have chairs. I've got questions.
You guys are always doing so much work behind the scene.
Come on.
Just come on up and show your beautiful faces here.
Under the front.
Have my seat, Diane.
We appreciate all of you taking the time to come here today, too, because this is a voluntary position.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got everybody situated?
That's without benefits.
That's right. So thank you, um, Chair Haynes, Board Member, Superintendent Balgobin. So as you alluded to, we're here to talk about the Project Oversight Committee, our annual book report. Before we get into the actual presentation of the book itself that Jake will do, I've just got a few remarks that I wanted to, to share. And thank you, Jake, for coming here and helping us with this. And Jake's been part of this committee since 2016. So this obviously aligns with our guardrails and our strategic plan, Guardrail Three, to improve operational efficiency and maximize resource to support student learning, and Guardrail Four, ensure high-quality community engagement with all of our stakeholders. And if you look at this slide, basically, it talks about the fact that a project oversight committee was established, um, when this referendum was passed. I won't read you that slide, but I thought this was a, an important moment to take a, a second to be thankful. Uh, in 2001, when this went on the ballot and was approved by our voters to have the point five cent sales surtax added to fund school capital improvements, technology construction, and fix capital costs. And in 2001 is when this committee was formed to have this oversight. In addition, in August of 2014, uh, the school board voted to put it back on the ballot and happy to report that it was approved again, which brings this all the way to December 31st, 2020, 31, that we have this. And not only should we be thanking the taxpayers of Volusia County, but also all the people that come to our wonderful county, that spend their money, that also helps contribute to this. So it's not just funded by our, our local residents, it's funded by everybody across, quite frankly, the world that decides to come and visit beautiful Volusia County. Now, you're going to hear in the presentation that Jake lays out to you some of the projects that have happened this year, some of the big projects in the schools, but just a very brief historical, and this is not encompassing everything, but we need to point these out because I think it's important that the citizens know this in case they don't. So Pearson Elementary came from this, the entire school replacement that opened in 2018. Chisholm Elementary, a school replacement that was phased through construction on the same site we built that. George Marx Elementary, Westside Elementary with new classrooms and administration building and expanded pickup area. Tomoka Elementary, which we opened last year. Terry T. Elementary, which we opened last year. Athletic facility upgrades at various high schools, and all of the things that we've talked about before, particularly when we just heard some of our legislative friends, when we had 1473 and 1470, this fund allowed us to be able to put some of those security enhancements in place that we desperately needed. As you alluded to, I want to take a moment and thank the citizens uh, that serve on this committee. So it is, it consists of six private citizens and one member of the school system. And I want to take a moment to acknowledge them. Not all of them are here, but some are sitting next to me. Um, we have a Major General Russell Sanborn, who's not with us, but he's new to the committee this year, has been a great addition. We have Ms. Sandy Bishop, who's not able to be with us. But Sandy, I guess, uh, I guess it's okay to say that Sandy's the OG for the young folks. I mean, she's one of the original that has been on this committee since the very beginning. Mr. Jason Myers, we've had Jason at the last few meetings, and Jason is very enthusiastic, wanted to be here, but was unable to. Jake Lammers, of course, who's sitting next to me. Diane Smith and Ms. Meredith Iannucci, who's right here as well. So we want to thank these citizens who give their time freely to come and serve on this project oversight committee. And so, uh, at that particular moment, uh, along with the kind of introduction and the background of this, I'll turn it over to Jake to kind of go through the book. Jake? Oh, wait, I, I would be remiss, sorry. Ms. Dolly Vitterman right here.
Dolly, we cannot thank you enough. For all Dolly does to help with this, she's, she's kind of the, the rock that keeps us all grounded. So thank you, Dolly. Jake?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cash, and thank you all for having us here again. It's very nice to see everyone. Um, and then also, I wanted to thank Mitch Ayton. Uh, he was a longtime committee member since inception, um, a, a great asset, put in a, a ton of work with us over the, the, the past seven years or however long we've, we've been on this thing. Um, he resigned this, this past year, and we definitely wish him the best and, and thank him for all he's done. Um, our committee's full report, uh, I think it's about 72 pages. It's been published, it's on our website. This presentation is not going to be 72 slides. We're just gonna highlight a, a, a few things that were accomplished. Um, our committee meets at least quarterly, uh, and then kind of as a on-needed basis as, as questions come up or things that are, need to be addressed. Um, a few highlights of the year. Uh, first off, sales tax revenue itself. I think it came in at approximately 67 million collected this past fiscal year. Um, just to put that in perspective, the, the first year, 2017, um, when the, the current resolution was adopted, was 41 million. So that's over a $25 million increase since then, uh, over 50% for us numbers guys. Um, so it's a, a substantial, you know, collection and, and use for, for the district. Uh, obviously, two major accomplishments were the, the two new schools that are recently completed, uh, both Stark Elementary and Orange City Elementary. Uh, I believe Stark had the ribbon cut recently and, and.
Orange City's is coming up.
And Orange City's is, is right around the corner. So two huge accomplishments that the district should obviously be very proud of. Um, uh, lining kind of with the, uh, rest of the highlights of the year would be the second STEM bus was launched. Um, from what I have heard, they're very well received by everyone. Um, and I think they've actually served over 10,000 visitors to date. So, uh, uh, again, a great thing that we've, we've seen the county be able to accomplish. Uh, technology-wise, the district was able to double the number of student devices purchased this, this past year. Um, and doing so in advance, made them readily available for the start of the coming school year. Also 1,200 staff devices and 400 interactive flat panels were purchased with half, half-cent sales tax funds.
And if I could add to that, I know Dr. Kuhn is over there, but we could not, in Volusia County, offer this level of technology to our students one-on-one, the flat panel screens. And I just saw Dr. Kuhn when I was able to visit Stark yesterday, I mean magnificent, without this particular mechanism to fund it. So.
Yeah, fantastic.
Great thing there. Um, security and safety, that's always a major focus. Um, they were able to complete a, a bunch of fencing and access control points, upgrading several schools throughout the county. And also the, the major security camera upgrade, I think, was scheduled to be completed between '23 and 2028, is ahead of schedule and might be done by the end of the year.
Our secondary are there and our elementary are fully on the way, and I can get you guys an update, but we're ahead of schedule. Yes, we are.
Yeah. So, so again, a, a, a great job by the, the staff there. Um, athletics, physical, physical education improvements, uh, some, some improved field lining was completed, resurfaced some lots, and also reclaimed water connections to the athletic facilities. Um, so across the board, a, a, a lot of accomplishments that, that everyone should be proud of, especially the staff that pulls this off. We, as a Oversight Committee, we obviously ask the questions and, you know, uh, do what we can, but it's, it's, you, you really do have an amazing staff that can actually pull this off.
And if I could add just a couple of things, I know that's on the slide, the, the science classroom remodeling, and I know Sandy Bishop is listening because that's one that Sandy's paid attention to. And I know some of our middle schools have already had some of these science labs refurbished. And having been a middle school principal, I tell you, they are very appreciative of that. And so that's a, that's another great thing. And one other thing that's talked about a lot at the committee that doesn't necessarily come up in this setting, is I don't think the public realizes sometime how this helps out. One thing that's very important in Florida, and we hear about it if it's not working, is air conditioning. I know Ms. Corr does as well. And so when we, when we look at some of our schools, that people don't understand how massive our chiller plants are, and all it takes for HVAC to work in this district. And this, again, this half-cent sales tax allows us to keep our students and our faculty and staff, it, for the most part, almost every day, in very comfortable learning conditions.
Yes, yes. And, and again, uh, again, with these highlights, also, there's some challenges that, that are being faced currently. Obviously, the, you know, you can't control the weather, storms, flooding, I don't want to say hurricanes and jinx it, but you, you know, all of these will cause delays on, on all these major product, uh, projects. Uh, material costs, availability, inflation, potential tariffs. I mean, this is every, all types of items that, that they have to plan for and, and encounter. Um, continued maintenance, as Mr. Cash just said, I mean, here in Florida, the heat's a constant battle with these HVAC systems. Uh, I mean, it's just, uh, something that's always has to be kept up with. Um, challenges and changes in the economic landscape, that can affect our sales tax revenue, even though it's kind of been in our favor recently. Uh, and growth. Uh, I mean, not only trying to finish current projects in a timely manner, but projecting for the future and, and what's needed with, with people moving around. And, and it's just a, a significant, significant challenge to, to be able to do all at once. Um, but, uh, we as an Oversight Committee feel that the, the staff has done a, a great job in, um, dealing all these challenges as they come.
And I will tell you, I would encourage all the citizens, if you get a moment, go and look at the book that, that Jake is highlighting here, that the committee's talking about. And, and I see Chair Haynes is holding up a, a hard copy there, and the, the board members have them, superintendent as well. When you go through that book and you look and you see what has been accomplished because the taxpayers of this county approved this, it's, it's incredible and it's massive, and it's something that to be proud of. And quite frankly, I know there are other districts across the state and probably across the country that are quite jealous that Volusia County has the citizens in this community that had the foresight way back when in 2001, 20-plus years ago, to be able to fund this referendum for our, uh, school system. So we're very appreciative.
Absolutely. Um, and then, and then I just have the, the excerpt directly from our report, uh, to summarize our, our feelings for the year. As we close this year's report, the Public Oversight Committee reaffirms its commitment to ensuring that the funds generated by the half-sales tax are used responsibly, effectively, and transparently. The residents of Volusia County entrusted the district with these resources to enhance our educational facilities, and it is our duty to demonstrate that their investment is producing meaningful results for students and the community. This year, the district made significant progress on major capital projects. Two long-awaited school rebuilds, Orange City Elementary and Stark Elementary are now complete and will welcome students in September 2025. These new campuses represent the type of transformational change that the sale, half-sales tax was designed to deliver, ensuring safe, modern learning environments for generations to come. Technology investments have also remained a priority. By strategically combining half-sales tax revenue with pandemic-era grant funding, the district was able to purchase double the usual quantity of student devices, building six-month inventory, and avoiding sharp cost increases. While recent tariffs have created new challenges in equipping staff, the foresight shown in managing student technology demonstrates responsible stewardship of taxpayer dollars. The success of the district's first STEM bus led to expansion of that program. The district added a second mobile classroom in April 2025, focused on middle school students. The new STEM bus will begin visiting campuses this fall, bringing science, technology, engineering, and mathematics experience to more students than ever before. The renovation of middle school science classrooms, a longstanding initiative championed by the Public Oversight Committee, made notable progress this year with the completion of upgrades to two classrooms. Plans are in place to renovate an additional two classrooms annually, steadily enhancing these critical learning environments. Athletics and physical education have also seen important enhancements across all high schools, from improved field lining to resurfaced courts and reclaimed water connections. These upgrades are strengthening the facilities where students compete, learn teamwork, and build lifelong healthy habits. Financially, revenue from this half-sales tax and continued studied upward trend, reflecting both strong community support and growth in the local economy. Importantly, a significant portion of this revenue comes from tourists, helping to reduce the tax burden on Volusia County residents while still investing in the future of our schools. Even as costs of construction and materials rise, the district continues to work closely with neighboring municipalities and school districts to review best practices and manage expenditures carefully. These efforts are essential to sustain the value of every dollar collected. Finally, transparency remains the cornerstone of success. The Public Oversight Committee strongly encourages the district to expand efforts to publicize half-cent projects via signage, social media, and through the district's website. Keeping the community well-informed is critical to sustaining support for current and future initiatives. Public awareness will be critical as the district looks ahead to the future. The Public Oversight's Project Oversight Committee is proud of the progress made this year and looks forward to seeing the continued impact of these investments through a half-cent sales tax. By remaining steadfast in its commitment to transparency, collaboration, and accountability, the district can ensure that the half-sales tax continues to serve as a powerful tool for building a stronger future for all students in Volusia County schools.
Mr. Clough?
And so I want to say thank you. You know, before, we're school board members, we're neighbors, and I'm proud to be Diane's neighbor, not next-door neighbor, but neighbor and, and so almost. And so I'm grateful to each and every one of you for taking your time to ensure that as taxpayers, which, you know, we are before we do this, and, and as neighbors, that, um, the oversight is, is there on the spending. I also want to, uh, thank you all for your, uh, if I remember correctly, it was last year you all came and said, we've got some concerns, we've got to spend some money, we need to do stuff around the science arena. What's going on there? We, and so it's either last year or the year before, I don't know. I think it was last year. Uh, and so I'm, I'm glad to see, I was looking at the recommendations, and it seems like we're either meeting or exceeding that goal. So I want to say, first of all, thank you to staff, who of course executes this. And second of all, thank you to you all for bringing that to our attention. As a result of that, uh, as you said, more than 10,000 students have gone through that STEM bus, and if you haven't been on it, it's super cool. And so again, thank you.
Thompson?
Thank you. I too wanted to say thank you for all of you for volunteering on this because I know you're all very busy. And so to take time to do this is phenomenal. So thank you for that. But also I encourage everyone to take a look at this book because there's so much in here. The safety and security part I love, but if you go through and see how much has been accomplished in, I mean, all across the county, it's not just one district, it's not just one area, it's all across to make our schools better in so many different ways, um, whether it's renovations, new classrooms, athletics, whatever it is, it's all over the place. So thank you guys for making sure that everything's diversified across the entire county and all the different categories. Appreciate that.
Goodrich?
Thank you guys for all that you do, and your meetings are always, um, very exciting to listen to and learn from. So, uh, we get asked a lot, where does our tax, where do our tax dollars go? And so this is a great example of where our tax dollars go, and you hit on a key point of this, and that such a large portion of this revenue comes from tourists that are paying, um, as they visit, and it's going directly to benefit our children. So how imperative is it that this continue on in the future?
Oh, it's, it's of the utmost importance. Um, and I think the proof is in the pudding. All's, all's the citizens have to do is take a look at this book, or ask any of you, or ask any school employee. We're happy to share the things that have been accomplished.
So what can we, as a board, do, um, to help with that?
I, I think, I think this is a step. We continue to talk about it. Um, it was a recommendation in the book. I think we're going to up our efforts to publicize this more, so that when citizens see things in our county that are getting done, they know that part of the sales tax contributed to that building, or to that STEM bus, or to that. I know these are conversations we've had at the actual committee meetings themselves. That's another area I think we can improve.
And are we, I know we talked about it in that, that in the committee meetings, are we actually posting when there's something being paid for by our tax, our sales tax dollars at work? Is that happening where it says your sales tax dollars at work? Is there a sign going up? And have we looked further into putting it on the STEM buses as well?
Yeah, that's absolutely, those things that we've discussed are in the process of getting that accomplished, yes. And I know you and, and Ms. Bishop and others on the committee, rightfully so, have said, we need to champion this. We've done this. Are we doing a good enough job of letting everybody know where this money is going, and we're going to continue to get better at that? I think we've done a good job, but we can always do better. And we're going to continue to get better at that. I think we've done a good job, but we can always do better.
What would need to happen so that those signs and stuff can go up? What's holding it back from happening?
I don't have the answer to that. I don't want to misspeak, but I will find that out and get it to you very, very shortly.
Thank you.
Dr. Balgobin.
Yeah, I think Patty already put those signs there, there in order for, yeah, for constructions. But I just wanted to say, you know, you kept talking about all the, shared some of the projects and how our staff has worked really hard. Thank you for acknowledging that because recently I had a conversation with the chair after we did the ribbon cutting for Stark. And we said, boy, we, we start doing some recollecting, recollection in terms of the past three years and all of the projects that, that we've been able to accomplish together. But that also means that you're taking time of, out of your busy schedule to be steadfast in committing your time to our students. So I want to thank you for that because you do a lot of work behind the scene. And I've met many of you prior to even assuming this role and you have been steadfast. You've been doing this for a number of years, which pretty much shows how committed you are to our county and our students. So on behalf of our staff and our students, I want to say thank you because I know you, all of you live, uh, live busy lives, but you still take the time to meet and to give us a listen and ear, but most important to work in a collaborative way because I truly believe that when we come together and we work together, we're a much stronger Volusia County. So you have helped us to make our county as strong as it is. So thank you so very much.
And so I'd like to close up with the fact that, um, when we did the ribbon cutting on Friday, we gave a shout out to all of you and let everyone know. And we had approximately 200 people at that ribbon cutting. The media center was packed full of community members, former employees, former students that attended Stark. And it was, it was a wonderful opportunity, but we let them know that every one of you volunteers on this to oversee it. And I said, so just think that half a cent, look at what it did. And I said, we're standing right now in a building that helped build that, that we wouldn't have for those students. And I know you don't realize this, but even some of the students out there, especially at the high school level, they track some of the projects that you're working on tied to their, um, high school. Cause at the beginning of the school year, I got a phone call from one of them. And her thing was, what about the tennis courts at Deland? Like where are the tennis courts at Deland falling right now? Because our Deland tennis team had been playing over, um, in the Earl Brown Park area. And they're, the city's taking away their tennis courts. They're going to turn them into pickleball and everything. But the young ladies, and this was the girls' tennis team, they said to me, it's not safe over there, Ms. Haynes, you know? We're, we can't really go into the restrooms. We don't feel safe going into the restrooms and as it gets darker there in the evening. And so they're hoping that, and, and theirs is on the list. It's in the book. I can now say, jump, look, hey, it's in the book. It's budgeted. But they're just excited that they're going to get the tennis courts at Deland High refinished so that they can come back and they can play on campus in a safe way. So I just, I don't think you realize the impact that you make through volunteering, but you make such an impact because we're putting students into, you know, state-of-the-art schools. We're making sure they have state-of-the-art technology, access to science and the, and the STEM buses and everything. But we're, more importantly, like you said earlier, we're keeping the air conditioning running. And that is a huge thing in Florida. Cause I'll tell you right now, we want to upset parents, students, teachers, staff. The air's not on at a school and we will hear from every one of them. But thank you so very much. And, and this is a, this is a great book. I actually think it's probably one of the ones that's laid out the best. It's very easy to read this one this year to see what's completed, what's in progress, and what's coming up. And so thank you. And I would encourage everyone to go on and take a look at it and see all the work that's been done. But we appreciate you and thank you for being here today.
Thank you guys.
Thanks so much.
We are now moving on to item four point zero two because we changed the order and we're going to the gifted update. Dr. Balgobin.
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Copeland and Ms. Beverly is here and they have a presentation for us. Rakia Beverly, she's our, our resource teacher from our E S C department. They will provide to us here today a short update on our gifted programs.
Well, good afternoon. Yes, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair Haynes, members of the school board, and Superintendent Dr. Balgobin. Thank you for this opportunity to share about our gifted services here in Volusia County. So as Dr. Balgobin stated, I have Rakia Beverly here with me and she will help me with this presentation this afternoon. So our presentation supports Policies three oh three, which governs our special programs and procedures for exceptional students along with Policy three oh seven that outlines our instructional practices. We will focus today on guard rail two, provide conditions that enhance student learning. Today I will provide an overview of our gifted services with a focus on what services are provided at the elementary level. I would like to begin by highlighting Dr. Balgobin's leadership in this work. Under her guidance, even when a deputy superintendent, even when she was a deputy superintendent, Volusia County Schools has been intentional about collaborating with other districts across Florida, such as Pinellas and Seminole to share best practices, expand opportunities, and strengthen the services we provide for our gifted learners. The spirit of collaboration ensures that we are not working in isolation, but instead leveraging the best thinking statewide to benefit our students and teachers. So Florida defines a gifted student as one who demonstrates superior intellectual development and is capable of high performance. Students may qualify through two pathways. The first is demonstrating a need for special services, showing a majority of gifted learner characteristics and scoring two standard deviations above the mean on a standardized intelligence test. Secondly, through the identification as part of an unrepresented group, including our students who are English language learners or who are students who come from a low socioeconomic background. Provided they meet the criteria in our district-approved plan, this ensures access for all students with gifted potential. It is also important to clarify the distinction between gifted services and gifted programs. Gifted services refer to the instructional strategies, supports, and specialized approaches we embed into our classrooms to meet the needs of our gifted learners. A program, on the other hand, refers to a specific model. Both are important, but the services ensure that regardless of the model, every identified gifted learner receives the instruction they meet, need to meet their unique needs. So beyond eligibility, the state requires that all gifted students have an educational plan or what we call an E P. This written plan serves as a guiding document of services for students. The E P ensures services, goals, and supports that are individualized to each student. The E P is developed in a very collaborative format. This includes parents and/or guardians, teachers, our gifted specialists, and when appropriate, the student. The plan must include the student's current performance levels, measurable goals, and specific services to be provided and how progress will be monitored. E Ps are formally reviewed every three years to ensure that services continue to meet the student's evolving needs. So in Volusia, we do a universal screener at, in second grade. And the students take the N N A T, non-verbal ability test. This standardized, language-free assessment is designed to measure a general, a student's general reasoning and problem-solving abilities through visual patterns and geometric shapes. Students who meet the threshold score and additional criteria may be referred for a full evaluation. Additionally, referrals can be made at any time if a student demonstrates indicators of giftedness. So on the screen, you see our district gifted screening criteria checklist. This is a tool we use to ensure consistency and compliance when determining which students may qualify for gifted services in Volusia County. The checklist establishes a clear and standard process. It helps us identify students who demonstrate exceptional academic ability and the need for accelerated instruction. It also ensures that we are meeting state guidelines and providing access for all students while allowing flexibility for individual student needs. At the elementary level, we provide two models of service delivery. Fourteen schools host full-time gifted services by feeder pattern, serving all eligible and placed students. In addition, we have four schools that offer part-time gifted resource services, which provide support to students identified as gifted learners and extend enrichment opportunities to high-achieving students. On the chart that you see on the screen, it outlines our feeder patterns for this school year. It shows how gifted services are distributed geographically to ensure access to students across our vast county. This structure provides consistency and clarity at the elementary level. These schools are designed to serve all eligible and placed students with peers who share similar learning needs. The full-time model follows, allows for in-depth differentiation, acceleration, and advanced curriculum opportunities aligned with both state standards and our Florida frameworks for gifted learners. This is often the best fit for students who needs cannot be met in the general education classroom alone. There are no feeder patterns for our middle and high schools as each school at the secondary level offers gifted services. In addition to the full-time models just discussed, four elementary schools provide part-time resource services. This looks different at each school, but some examples are, the model serves eligible students and high achieving, giving, high achievers, giving them access to advanced enrichment while still participating at their zone school. Students typically attend resource sessions weekly where instruction focuses on critical thinking, problem-solving, and project-based learning. This model provides flexibility and extends access to the gifted education, making it possible to serve more students and adapt to the specific needs of each school community. Together, our full-time and part-time structures ensure that we're meeting the diverse needs across our district. All teachers of gifted learners in core subject areas must either be fully endorsed or actively working towards that endorsement. The state requires five endorsement courses. Each course is sixty hours. Teachers out of field must complete two courses the first year, two courses the second year, and finish the third course in their final, in the third year, the fifth course in their third year. To support our teachers, Volusia County offers these courses free to all teachers all year long. And our instruction of gifted learners combines the Florida best standards with the Florida framework for gifted learners. Instructional strategies include curriculum compacting, differentiated learning, flexible pacing, project-based learning, and a strong emphasis on critical thinking and problem-solving. We prioritize student choice and ensure that learning experiences are both challenging and meaningful. It is a central priority for Dr. Balgobin that she has ensured that both teachers and students have access to a viable, rigorous, and engaging curriculum. Gifted education is simply not about acceleration. It's about depth. It's about complexity and the opportunities to challenge our learners to think critically, problem-solve creatively, and extend their learning beyond the grade-level expectations. So in closing, as a district, we stay committed to not only maintaining but strengthening the work that we do for our gifted learners. This means enhancing the professional development. We provide teachers, expanding opportunities for identification, and ensuring that every student who qualifies has meaningful access to gifted instruction. We want our families and our community members to know that gifted education is not an afterthought. It is a vital part of our mission to ensure that we engage students in high levels of learning every day. So thank you for your time and I will open it up to questions and discussion.
Mrs. Brosmer. I, I want to thank you for all of this, especially for the fact that you fleshed out a lot of the, the, um, slides and provided more context. I, I do especially appreciate that. I have a few questions and, and a couple of observations, but I want to start out with some of the feedback I got from, uh, how responsive the staff has been to some of the requests at, at Tomoka. In particular, uh, splitting the first graders and the kinder kids, um, into their own classes. The, the first note I got, which I did share with, uh, with the board, um, but there, there's one paragraph in particular. I will let you know, if you don't already, that the kindergarten and first grade class was split up officially today. My daughter, among many other first graders, said it was a peaceful, great learning day. And then because I thanked that mom for, for letting me know that, she said, here are a few other, um, comments she got as feedback. She said, uh, and, and these are comments from the kids. It was the best day ever because it was so quiet. Mom said, best behavior he's gotten since school started. It was an amazing day. And the last one is, Mrs. Kimmel was so nice today because there weren't any kinder, kindergartners, like no more stressing out or anything. So they were very grateful, the parents and the kids were very grateful for, for your responsiveness to their concerns and, and the, uh, the, the issues that they raised. Uh, there are a couple of things that, just a couple of observations. In going, looking at F D O E's description of, uh, gifted programs and, and their overview of it, a couple of things that I think the state could do better. Uh, one is in their definition of what is a gifted child because gifted kids aren't just smarter. They, they think differently. Their, their, uh, their critical thinking skills, their, their memory is quicker and, and, um, broader, their abstract thinking. They, they, their sensory, um, responses are more intense than, than the average child. So their social-emotional skills are advanced and their communication skills are also advanced. So I think it would be helpful if the, if the state's description of, of what is a gifted child was a little bit broader than, than what they have on their website, which is, which is what you gave us. I, I also, uh, had to kind of make a mental note of the relationship in the way the state evaluates our grading system for, for schools and districts, that learning gains get short shrift for gifted students because once you're at a four or a five, there isn't any place for you to go. And we get so much credit from learning gains that I would really like for the state to find some way to accommodate the success of the, of the gifted kids, um, in, in a more tangible way. Beyond that, I have a couple of questions. If, if a, if a teacher isn't fully certified, do they have to have, do they have to have reached a certain level of their certification, um, before they can teach it? Even if they're not finished, before they can teach a gifted class? And what I'm equating it to, and you tell me where I'm wrong here, is, um, is a person with a, a learner's permit, uh, to drive. They are allowed to drive with a fully licensed driver, but they're not allowed to drive with somebody who doesn't have a permit. I mean, it doesn't have a driver's license. So how do we, how do we accommodate that, um, part of the process?
So teachers have the opportunity to be out of field for one year. But when you are pursuing your gifted endorsement, you have to finish two classes within that first year in order to continue to teach gifted learners. If not, you will not be able to teach gifted learners until you have completed the courses.
And, and are they in with a fully certified gifted teacher as they're learning? Or are they in the class alone?
They're in the class alone. So remember, our, the gifted, um, the gifted endorsement, it's not a certification, it's an endorsement. So there are certified teachers that are pursuing a gifted endorsement. And so when we have teachers pursuing a gifted endorsement, this is where we have Ms. Beverly because she supports not only our new teachers to, um, teaching gifted learners, but all of our gifted services, all of our teachers that provide gifted services at the elementary level.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there such a thing as counselors who are trained to work with gifted students? Or is that just, are counselors just more broadly for everybody?
School counselors are more broadly for everyone.
Okay. I think probably the, the last thing I want to mention is that, um, I, I asked the, the parents who had been in touch with me to let me know if there was anything additional that wasn't included in the presentation. And the only comment I got back that I thought should be, I should pass on is that, um, one of the parents said she felt like there was a slide missing. And that had to do with the process the parents have to go through in order to get their kids into gifted programs. She mentioned, um, things like the fact that they have to get their paperwork in by May fifteenth, but they don't, don't find out if their child has been assigned to a class. but they don't find out if their child has been assigned to a class. In her case, it was until the day before meet the teacher. And so she, I think it probably would be helpful for a parent to fill in those blanks with you, to give them, to give you a sense of what it's like for them to implement that process, and see if there might be ways to streamline it somehow or make it more efficient for both the parents and the school.
I would love to speak with that parent, but there is a difference in when we evaluate versus when a parent gets a private evaluation and then we have to take that evaluation. Our school psychologist verifies that it is a viable and accurate evaluation, and then once that's done, then we can have the eligibility meeting for the student to be placed in the, to receive gifted services.
Okay, that's helpful too, and I'll be glad to pass it on, but I greatly appreciate your help this, I was going to say this morning, today, whatever time it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goodrich?
Just a couple of questions, so thank you for all you do. What does like a day in the life of a gifted student in elementary school look like in a full-time gifted program versus part-time?
So, two things I want to say. The first time in a full-time gifted program, the student is with the teacher, just like in every other classroom in elementary, but the things that they are doing are different in terms of the pace of the curriculum, how we tackle the curriculum looks different. For our part-time students, there's two things that happen in part-time. Sometimes in part-time, there is a teacher that is there with them full day, but sometimes they go to a different classroom for maybe a session just for one week, depending on how their EP is written.
Okay, so in full-time, they're in a class of all gifted kids?
Yes.
All day long?
Yes.
Okay. And since it's only offered at certain schools, how are the kids transported from other schools that are gifted, that don't have gifted program at their school?
So because we've created these feeder pattern, we provide transportation to those schools.
Okay. Thank you. I was hoping you would say that.
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. And so, I know I've said before that my kids are in the gifted, so they do the half-day or part-time gifted program. And I love that you guys are so hands-on, and thank you so much. You answer calls and emails very quickly. Every parent that I've sent your way, you all responded instantly. So thank you for that attention detail and for going out to the schools and visiting. I know Ms. Beverly, I've seen pictures of you with the kids before, and I just, I love how involved you are in the program, I think is what I say. But I do appreciate that we have the part-time gifted available, because, you know, we have schools that have the full-time gifted, and some people want to stay at their community school or don't, you know, want to be transported for whatever reason. But it's nice because it's such a big enrichment, in part because, as Ms. Brosmer mentioned, you know, there's behavioral, there's critical thinking skills, there's other things, and sometimes they just need more space to let those ideas flow. And so I do appreciate that you all have both those programs available to our students in so many different schools, so thank you.
Mr. Cologne?
It kind of feels weird, I'm going to call you Mrs. Ashberry, just because that's how I know you, and I don't know you. It's kind of weird to hear people call you by your name, because, yeah. What does gifted look like in the middle school and high school? I know it's a little bit, in elementary, it's easier and pronounced, but in middle school and high school, what does that look like? You know, we know they still have those extraordinary abilities and strengths. How do we make sure that they are successful as that environment goes from the same kids you've been with probably for the last three years to poof? I can't even imagine. So if you can share a little bit of that, I'd appreciate it.
So in middle school, as a former middle school principal, in middle school, our gifted learners are paired with our high achiever, so they, because our high achievers qualify to take our advanced courses. And remember, in secondary, we have IB, AP. We have so many advanced course options, but they still receive those services in their core areas, in science, math, social studies, and language arts.
When you say those services, what does that mean?
So in order, so in middle school, they have to have a gifted endorsed teacher or a teacher working on the gifted endorsement. So the services dependent on the child vary whether it's X number of minutes of making sure that they are receiving those services, just like a student with an IEP, but it's just their educational plan.
Is that for core curs, for the core courses?
Yes, only for their core courses.
Interesting. I didn't know that. All right, very good. Thank you.
All right.
Go ahead.
I had one more question. It pertains to middle school and high school. So do they, are there like basic honors and gifted, or how are they, how are the core classes structured?
So we have general education, we have honors, advanced placement, our IB, and so some, most times, our gifted students are in those AP, IB courses. And in middle school, our advanced placement courses at the middle school level.
Do they have opportunities to take maybe math that would be offered in high school, in middle school, or other opportunities such as that?
Yes, they do. Some of them dual-enroll already, just various pathways for all students. And that's one great thing about Volusia, is that it's not a one-size-fits-all. We do have very different pathways. And we do have students who are double-exceptionality, so we have students who are gifted but also receive ESE services, so.
That's part of what I was going to bring up, is there are, children are unique, whether they're sitting in a gen ed, you know, an ESE classroom, a gifted classroom, and a gifted child isn't necessarily gifted in all areas. They have areas that are their strengths and weaknesses, just as each child does. And what is nice about the middle and high school is the area that's their strength, they can excel and go into a higher-level course, but if there's an area that is not their strength, even though they have the IQ in the gifted range, they can get the support and services that they need. And that even does happen at the elementary level, because you actually can have an ASD child that's also gifted. And you can have a child, like I did years ago in first grade, who in first grade was reading at a fifth to sixth-grade level, but her math was only at the beginning of second grade, okay? And so you couldn't just say, well, she's gifted, and we're just going to drop her over here. We had to address the math, because there was a huge gap between her math ability and her reading ability, even though she was doing math at a higher level than first grade. But the other thing that I find interesting, and a lot of people don't think about, but Ms. Brosmer, I thought about what you asked about, you know, how parents can get their kids into the program. Ideally, if everybody heard it, we give the screener in the public school system at the beginning of second grade, because children, depending on the experiences they've had at home prior to coming to kindergarten, you can have some kids come to kindergarten who are readers, but they're not actually gifted. They just had someone at home that was reading to them and pointing all of the, they had a rich environment prior to coming to kindergarten. But then they kind of plateau out about second or third grade, we see. So that's why the screener has always been given at the beginning of second grade. But what happens is, we have a lot of parents that just, and some of those kids turn out to be, but they think, no, I just want to go ahead and get my kid privately tested. Well, when they're getting their child privately tested, it's not just you can get your child privately tested and walk in and go, here's the test score, so tomorrow, put them, you know, tomorrow, when they start kindergarten, I want them in a gifted classroom, because there are steps that they have to go through, which does mean one of our psychologists has to go through the assessment that was given, and was it a credible person that administered the assessment? Did they administer the correct assessment? What were the results of the assessment and all of that, to then staff them into that program? And that does take time. And so I think that's one of the things that with a lot of, and it's harder to plan on how many we're going to have for kindergarten. We've always said for years, you just don't know what's coming in the door. Like, you can look at birth rates, you can look at all this stuff, and until they show up on campus, you may, because, believe it or not, you would think every parent out there knows that starting the spring before kindergarten, they should go in and register their children. But there are parents that have put kindergartners on buses on the first day of school, never having walked into a school to register their child. They just know it's time for them to go to kindergarten, and a bus pulls up, and they put them on it, and they send them to us, and we don't even know who they are or where they came from. And I have experienced that. And so, you know, this year, we under-projected kindergarten based on the last couple of years, and so we need some kindergarten teachers. I've been telling everybody, I told them at the NAACP meeting the other night, we need some kindergarten teachers, especially in the Deland area. But the thing of it is, I think what we need parents to do, and I don't know how to reach the parents, especially if they're sending their first child to us, I don't know how to reach them to get them to know, we need you to come in in the spring. We need you to register your child. If you're having them tested for gifted, we need you to tell us that so that we can help figure this out, because we need that information in order to do a better job of staffing and being prepared for the little ones to come in.
You've made several good points, and I'm not going to remember all of the comments that came to mind at the time, but with regard to that one, the parent who spoke to me had, she did do the private testing before second grade, but she also had brought her, submitted her paperwork in the spring. I think your point is well-taken, that it's hard to reach the parents of the VPK kids, because it's hard to know who they are to a large extent. But I think, based on what I heard, oh, your point about we need more kinder teachers. One of the comments, I was approached last night by a substitute from Tomoka, and she said, "We are wall-to-wall, we can barely get around in the classroom, and we don't have a teacher. A coach has been assigned, and she's overwhelmed." And so there are areas where we do really need help, and I'm guessing that part of the reason is because we don't know how to anticipate how many VPK kids there will be.
We don't. And Woodward Elementary is in the same spot right now, they are wall-to-wall kindergartners. And the other interesting thing is, when you look at the certifications required by the state and what people have on their certificate, kindergarten falls into another category. It doesn't necessarily, depending on when you got your certification and did your coursework, it doesn't fall into just elementary ed. It falls into what we call primary education. And so we have people out there that may have elementary ed certification, and they're certified first through sixth or first through fifth, depending on where they got it and the way they applied for it, but they don't have kindergarten on their certificate, because kindergarten requires a different form of certification. And so that's one of those areas, I think, and I know Tiffany Fuller and her group will work on it, but I think we've got to get out there. We need kindergarten teachers, and there are people sitting, not that I want to steal from, VPK centers, and I'm, but I've been talking about this. I also think, and Dr. Bogdan knows, I have said, we need to take our students coming out of Atlantic High and Deland High that are already coming out, pre-K, VPK-certified, and we need to move them into our pre-K, VPK classrooms, so that we can take our certified teachers that are teaching pre-K and VPK and move them back into kindergarten and first, where we have a shortage. Because the state law, it's wonderful to have a certified teacher in those classes, but the state law does not require that we have a certified teacher in the VPK program. And Seminole County does this. They use people that have the child certification, and then they have somebody like Beverly, Ms. Beverly, that's over them, okay, who does the lesson plans for them and all that. And I also think that's how we're going to get those young people to then want to go into education and further their degree, which we can help them out with through Daytona State. And so that's something I keep talking about, and I keep asking each year, so how many of the kids coming out of Atlantic High could go in and take over a VPK class, so we could take that teacher and put them into kindergarten or first grade? And I think we need to look at that. So I, look, you know?
We have taken a few, Ms. Beverly.
Well, I think we need to, we need to take a few more.
But some of them definitely want to further their degrees.
But we can help them, we further their degrees. But I think we need to, because I'm happy to see our kindergarten numbers going back up, because if we get them in in kindergarten, we're going to, I think, keep them. And so I appreciate everything that you guys have done, and thank you for explaining it so beautifully today and answering all of our questions.
Thank you all.
Thank you, ladies. They had perfect timing.
They had perfect timing. They did a great job. So we are skipping 5.01 right now, and we're going to 6.01, the non-disclosure agreement discussion. Dr. Evans?
Madam Chair, School Board members, and Superintendent, let me talk a little bit about the non-disclosure agreement. First, what was its purpose? And why was this document created for Volusia County? For about 100 of 8,000 employees. It was created to protect Volusia County School District from liability. It was created to ensure that sensitive information, such as information regarding students and staff, safety plans, legal proceedings, discussions, and proprietary software owned by the district is not compromised. It was created as a deterrent from sharing unauthorized information. No employee's sensitive financial information, such as 403B contributions, deductions, income tax information, claim dependence, et cetera, should ever be disclosed or discussed unless required to do so by law. Technology created for the exclusive use of Volusia County schools should not be shared with or utilized by other districts or entities without the express permission of Volusia County schools. Matters in litigation should never be discussed or disseminated or even posted on social media. Hence, the NDA was created to deter such actions. The NDA is not an instrument used in the district to hide or conceal financial information. Our budgetary information is discussed at board meetings, it's available on our website, and submitted to the Florida Department of Education. Moreover, our financial information is audited internally and externally on an annual basis. I submit to you, ladies and gentlemen, that this document protects the integrity of data, ensures proper context and interpretation, and strives to uphold the public trust by disseminating accurate information at the appropriate time. For as we all know, there is no shortage of misconception as it relates to funds and sources of revenue used to fund district priorities. Also, please note that the NDA unequivocally and expressly state that confidential or sensitive information which is required to be disclosed by law, regulation, or court order must be disclosed. At one of our prior meetings, Ms. Brosmer submitted a legal memorandum which asserted that the NDA was unconstitutional, unconscionable, and violated First Amendment rights, among other assertions. As a Florida licensed attorney, many of those comments gave me pause. To avoid the highly calculated risk of being characterized as biased in my legal opinion regarding these assertions, Mr. Aaron Wolf, a licensed attorney who has been a member of the Florida Bar for over 30 years and has practiced in the public sector, including governmental entities, was asked to write a legal opinion on the constitutionality and validity of our NDA. He will come forward to share his opinion. He will come forward to share his opinion with the board. Members of the board, it is only fair for the record to reflect that Ms. Brosmer had a legal opinion written by an attorney by the name of Irene Cortez, who has been a member of the Florida Bar for one year, to provide a legal opinion as well. That opinion was emailed to all board members. We will also address the things that were listed in that legal opinion. Madam Chair, I would like to supply each board member with a copy of the non-disclosure statement, the legal opinion written by Aaron Wolf, the legal opinion that was written on behalf of Ms. Brosmer for the board, and also our response to that legal opinion.
Point of order, Madam Chair. At the previous meeting, when I gave the members my own, my own legal memo, I believe you said at the time that one of the reasons we couldn't discuss it was because it had not been posted, it had not been made available to the public. And I would like to note that neither of these legal memos have been made, have been posted or made available to the public for their consideration. So I'd like to know how this matter today, how this procedure today differs from what we had two weeks ago. Because this is the first time I'll be seeing it, it's the first time any of us will be seeing it, and I'm not sure any of us should be discussing it until we've had an opportunity to review it.
Okay, so actually, what I said that night is, because it not, you, you gave your statement as it was passed out to us, and we started reading it, but you ended your statement with making a motion to vote on it, to rescind the NDA that the superintendent had put into place. And so, I want to clarify, what I said is, there would be no vote on it, because it had not been noticed for the public to be able to come, and, because whenever we're going to vote on something, the public has to come, and they have the right to speak on it prior to us voting. So, the difference between a workshop and a board meeting, and you asking for us to vote on it that evening, to rescind something that we had never even voted to put into place, that's where the real difference is. The reason why we have workshops is so that we can discuss these things. And I do realize that we're all going to want to have some time to read this. So what I would like to propose is that, because I did read the one that you submitted, this one, I have read this, and I also read what you gave us that night. I took it home and went through all of it and read it. So what I would like to do is, I'd like for us to take a 15-minute recess, and everybody has a chance, go wherever you would like to do, read through this and come back, because in a workshop, we're not voting on anything. We're just having a discussion about it, so that we can discuss it, and then make the next steps of what we think we need to do.
Is there a point at which both of the legal memos will be posted for the public to read? Because that's also part of what we do in a workshop. And if we're going to be... The reason I got a memo was because I had asked for someone to be able to come and present, and Dr. Evans said he was going to get an outside counsel to do a memo. So I thought, okay, a memo is fine, and I paid out of my own pocket to get this one, so that we would have a certified legal counsel in the state of Florida to offer an alternative interpretation of the applicable laws. In order to have full disclosure and transparency for the public, I think both of those legal memos need to be posted on, on board docs for anyone to be able to read.
No, I actually agree. I think all of this can be posted on board docs for, under the workshop, under this item, for everyone to read.
Thank you.
I have no problem with that. But is everyone okay with taking a 15-minute recess, so that each of you can have time to read over what we have here in the folder? All right, then it is approximately, we'll just, all right, let's just come back in at 3:35, okay? I'm giving you a little bit, no, 3:25. Come back in at 3:25. And at 3:25, be prepared to discuss or ask any questions about what you have. So we'll, we're taking a break, and we'll be back in here at 3:25.
Welcome back. It is 3:30 PM and we're going to continue on with item 6.01, the NDAs. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, as Dr. Evans pointed out, the purpose of the NDA is to ensure sensitive information, such as information regarding students and staff, safety plans, legal proceedings, internal discussions, and proprietary software are not compromised. The NDAs are meant to be an important reminder to employees to keep confidential information confidential. In the legal memorandum submitted by Board Member Brosmer and Attorney Court, it is asserted that the NDA is unconstitutional. It is argued that the district is not legally allowed to add new documents or discussions to the definition of what is designated as "confidential." And the memorandum cites to Article 1, Section 24, access to public records and meetings of the Florida Constitution as the basis for asserting the NDA is unconstitutional. Article 1, Section 24A of the Constitution provides that "every person has the right to inspect or copy any public record made or received in connection with the official business of any public body, officer or employee of the state, or persons acting on their behalf, except with respect to records exempted pursuant to this section or specifically made confidential by this Constitution." Section C of Article 1, Section 24, provides that "legislature may provide by general law, passed by two-thirds vote of each House, for the exemption of records from the requirements of subsection A." And the legislature has provided numerous exemptions of records from the requirements of subsection A. So the memorandum asserts that the district has no legal authority to add definitions to what documents or discussions are to be considered confidential. Apparently, it's argued that the district may not add to the type of documents which are exempt from the public records law, as only the legislature may create such exemptions. However, this argument completely overlooks the plain language of the NDA, which is not inconsistent with subsection A. Also, it's important to note that the plain language of the definition set forth in the NDA is for this agreement only. It is not to expand the laws or the Constitution of the state of Florida. Moreover, the NDA specifically provides that "confidential information does not include information that is required to be disclosed by law, regulation, or court order." Therefore, the NDA specifically excludes all documents which are required by law to be disclosed. The Florida Constitution requires the disclosure of public records, unless exempted by general law. Thus, public records are required to be disclosed by law. And so the NDA does not encompass public records and does not add definitions as to what types of documents are to be considered confidential under state law. Therefore, the NDA is not unconstitutional. The memorandum asserts that the district has no legal authority to add definitions as to what discussions are to be considered confidential. Again, the memorandum cites to Article 1, Section 24B of the Florida Constitution. And that section provides that "all meetings of any collegial public body of the executive branch of state government or of any collegial public body of a county municipality, school district, or special district at which official acts are to be taken or which public business of such body is to be transacted or discussed, shall be open and notice to the public, and meetings of the legislature shall be open and notice is provided in Article 3, Section 4E, except with respect to meetings exempted pursuant to this section or specifically closed by this Constitution." So, once again, this argument fails to consider that the express language of the NDA specifically excludes from the definition of confidential information "any information that is 'required to be disclosed by law, regulation, or court order.'" Article 1, Section 24B requires that "all meetings of any collegial body of any school district at which public business of such body is to be transacted or discussed shall be open and notice to the public." Therefore, information disclosed at school board meetings is required to be disclosed by law and is excluded from the definition of confidential information in the NDA. Furthermore, the Sunshine Law applies to meetings of elected or appointed boards and does not ordinarily apply to staff committees or meetings. The Sunshine Law does not apply when a governmental executive uses staff for a fact-finding and advisory function in fulfilling his or her duties. And the Fifth District Court of Appeal has held that the Sunshine Law did not apply to informal meetings of staff where discussions were merely informational, where none of the individuals attending the meetings had any decision-making authority during the meetings, and where no formal action was taken or could have been taken at the meetings. It's also been held that meetings among staff to assess and make recommendations regarding contract management do not implicate the open meeting requirements. So, the NDA requires district staff to keep confidential communications confidential. Staff meetings are not ordinarily covered by the open meeting requirements of the state constitution in the Sunshine Law. So accordingly, the NDA is not unconstitutional. With respect to financial and budgetary information specifically, internal meetings and discussions involving staff members are generally not subject to the Sunshine Law, unless the staff are part of a decision-making body or committee. As with any business entity, including public entities, employees are entrusted with sensitive financial and budgetary information, for example, 403B contributions, deductions, income tax information, claim dependence, et cetera, that they are not authorized to disclose, particularly when such disclosure falls outside their official duties. The memorandum also states that there is no work-product privilege as a basis for the district's assertion of a right of nondisclosure, and that not even the attorney-client privilege can justify restrictions on disclosing the information. In fact, the district is not relying on either privilege. If the public records law or open meetings law apply to the subject documents or communications, then the express terms of the NDA provide that it does not encompass those documents or communications, and they may be disclosed by the employee. And both memoranda also address the conscientability or unconscionability of the NDA. It stated that the NDA is unenforceable under the Florida legal doctrine regarding unconscionable contracts. But before a court may hold a contract unconscionable, it must find that it is both procedurally and substantively unconscionable. The NDA, under review, is not procedurally unconscionable because there's no indication that the employees could not read the NDA before they signed it, or that they were pressured, rushed, or coerced into signing the NDA. There's no suggestion that the employees lack a full and fair opportunity to inquire into the NDA's terms. In addition, the NDA's operative terms are not hidden, minimized, or buried in fine print. Furthermore, substantive unconscionability requires an assessment of whether the contract terms are so "outrageously unfair as to shock the judicial conscience." A substantively unconscionable contract is one that no man in his senses and not under delusion would make on the one hand, and as no honest and fair man would accept on the other. So, in this matter, the subject NDA does not come close to being an unconscionable contract. There is nothing procedurally unconscionable with the NDA. Also, nothing in the NDA is outrageously unfair, and there's nothing in the NDA that would shock the judicial conscience. The NDA merely requires that district employees keep confidential information of their employer confidential. Therefore, the NDA is enforceable as it does not constitute an unconscionable contract. And in the memo prepared by Attorney Court, it's conceded that there is "likely not sufficient proof of substantive unconscionability." So even in the memo prepared by Attorney Court, it's conceded that the NDA is not unconscionable. The memorandum next asserts that the NDA is unenforceable because it violates employees' First Amendment rights regarding free speech as well as whistleblower protection. As to whistleblower protection, the NDA expressly provides that "nothing in this agreement prohibits or restricts the employee from making other disclosures protected under whistleblower provisions of federal or state law." Therefore, the NDA specifically protects the right of employees to make all disclosures protected under whistleblower provisions of federal or state law. As to the First Amendment argument, a number of courts, including the United States Supreme Court, have rejected First Amendment challenges to nondisclosure agreements. And the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeal has stated that the court has not identified any cases holding that a nondisclosure agreement alone amounts to a prior restraint in violation of the First Amendment. The NDA, under review, is narrowly tailored to protect the legitimate interest of the district in protecting confidential information from public disclosure. Therefore, it would likely withstand a First Amendment challenge. The memorandum also asserts that the district cannot be irreparably harmed by the release of confidential information unless it is functioning in an illegal, unethical, or otherwise improper way. That assertion is simply incorrect. For instance, maintaining confidentiality of information related to ongoing or potential legal claims involving the district ensures that the integrity of legal matters is not compromised. Also, maintaining the confidentiality of safety and security plans ensures that the safety and security of students and staff is not compromised. The NDA also protects the district's intellectual property and protects confidential information regarding students and staff. Release of any of this confidential information could cause irreparable harm to the district. The memo written by Attorney Court concedes that irreparable harm is avowed claim for damages in asserting a claim against the party for violation of restrictive covenants, such as those included in the NDA. It asserts that although the board can make a claim for irreparable harm, the confidential information that the board is prohibiting the disclosure of is actionable under other statutory provisions and measures for addressing the harm. However, Attorney Court fails to specifically identify those other statutory provisions or measures. In fact, disclosure of the confidential information could cause a damage to the district which cannot be quantified or compensated financially, and this would cause irreparable harm to the district. harm to the district, which would form the basis for an injunction to enforce the NDA. In her memo, Ms. Court also touches on the constitutional rights of employees. She asserts that an employee may have an argument that preventing their discussion of information of public concern, such as some of the topics included in the NDA, under the definition of confidential information, is a violation of their First Amendment right to speech. But the memoranda does not cite to a single case holding that an NDA violates First Amendment rights. And as I mentioned, a number of courts, including the United States Supreme Court, have rejected challenges to nondisclosure agreements. As Dr. Evans touched on, in the areas of financial and budgetary information, the NDAs are highly effective. District employees are entrusted with sensitive financial and budgetary information that employees are not authorized to disclose, particularly when such disclosure falls outside their official duties. This nondisclosure requirement is the same within any business entity, including public entities. The discussion of budgetary information is often a necessary part of internal meetings. However, sometimes the information taken from these internal meetings can be misconstrued. When information relating to the allocation of district funds and the sources of revenue used to fund district initiatives is misinterpreted and repeated to a third party, public trust can be injured. The NDA ensures that only accurate information, information in its proper context and correct interpretation, is circulated and that the public trust is upheld. At the same time, budgetary data, such as detailed revenue and expenditure breakdowns, are openly available to the public by way of open discussions during school board meetings, distribution of the district's budget through its website, through public records requests, and through the Department of Education. Also, there are annual internal and external audits of the district's finances. In each of those settings, the financial disclosures are made in the proper context with precise explanation. In this way, the NDAs protect the integrity of data and do not prevent the availability and transparency of budgetary data. The NDA safeguards against information being shared with a third party when in certain situations and time parameters, such information is statutorily confidential, specifically pursuant to Section 447.605 of the Florida statutes. All work product developed by the district in preparation for negotiations with labor organizations is confidential and exempt from the provisions of Chapter 119 of Public Records Law during the pendency of the negotiations. Once negotiations end, the work product is no longer confidential and exempt and becomes part of the public record. The NDA is a means to protect the district from premature disclosure of work product information that could be a detriment to the district's interests during labor negotiations. Also, the NDAs are an operational matter under the administration of the superintendent. School Board Policy 110 sets forth the school board superintendent relationship. And this policy provides that the superintendent shall be responsible for the administration of all aspects of school operation and for such other duties and powers pertaining thereto as the school board may direct or delegate. The superintendent may delegate responsibility to other officials to the extent that delegation is necessary and proper to the efficient operation of Volusia's schools. The superintendent shall develop such procedures as are necessary to ensure efficient operation of the district's school system. Policy Number 110 also provides that individual school board members shall not attempt to act as administrators of the school district. So pursuant to Policy 110, the superintendent is responsible for the administration of all aspects of school operation. Also, the policy provides that the superintendent shall develop such procedures as are necessary to ensure efficient operation of the school system. So based on Policy 110, it appears the decision to request non-instructional staff who work in departments or roles with access to sensitive or confidential information to sign nondisclosure agreements would be an operational decision for the superintendent to make as part of her day-to-day administration of all aspects of school operation. However, Policy 110 would allow the school board to have a discussion with the superintendent regarding nondisclosure agreements. The implications of a school board member interfering with the superintendent's administration can be significant and multifaceted. Such interference can disrupt the leadership and administration of the school district, undermining the overall effectiveness of the educational system. Such interference will likely create tension, hinder effective governance, and compromise the educational mission of the school district. So, in summary, nondisclosure agreements are routinely used by employers to maintain confidentiality and protect sensitive information. The district with 8,200 employees and over 62,000 students maintains innumerable confidential and sensitive datum not disclosable by the Florida Constitution or the Sunshine Law, including but not limited to students' private information, proprietary property and software, and confidential information derived from legal claims in cases and investigations. The NDA is intended to ensure that such information remains confidential while not restricting the public's access to public records. The NDAs are not an effort to hide financial and budgetary information. Therefore, the subject NDAs are not unconstitutional or unconscionable. Furthermore, the NDAs do not violate employees' constitutional right of free speech or their whistleblower protection, and do not violate Florida's public records law or open meetings law. And finally, the NDAs are an operational matter under the administration of the superintendent. So for all these reasons, the NDAs, under review, are valid and enforceable contracts under Florida and federal law. And with that, I'll turn it over to discussion and any questions you may have.
Ms. Brosmer. Well, since this is my issue, thank you for letting me go first. I'm not going to read in full the counterargument. You touched on some of it, and so I will only mention a few things. And then, because it will be posted, then anybody can read it, read both of them and evaluate them. One of the things that came to mind in all of this is that I was taught in grammar school that you can't use a word in the definition of the word. And I find that a lot of the justification for the NDA is citing the NDA. And so, I'm kind of wrestling with that. At the heart of all of this is the definitions. Because I think the first page of the NDA is pretty plain when it says specifically, and of course, this is the sentence that seemed to create the most heartburn. The introductory sentence is, "Definition of confidential information. For purposes of this agreement, confidential information includes but is not limited to information regarding the district's financial operations, including budgets, funding sources, and allocation of resources." There is no comment in any of this that has anything to do with disclosing anybody's 401K equivalent, and I'm sorry, I forgot what the public designation is. But I think that language is pretty clear. It's very broad, and it goes beyond statute, and it goes beyond any constitutional definitions of public documents. For the most part, the NDA cites categories that we already know are confidential, which makes the NDA unnecessary. And with regard to intellectual property, there are already laws that protect intellectual property, so there are already remedies there. But one aspect of this, of your memo, really jumped out at me. The NDA ensures that only accurate information, information in its proper context and correct interpretation, is circulated. That is an attempt to control a variety of perspectives, or opinions, or observations, or discussions, because the wording of the NDA restricts employees to, let's see. Let's see if I can find it quickly. "The employee agrees not to disclose, publish, or communicate any confidential information to any person, business entity, or other organization unless specifically authorized in writing by the district." So the issue there is, what is confidential information? That is presumably as it's defined in this NDA. But the constitutional provisions for, I think in a lot of your analysis, there was no distinction made between the way NDAs can be used in the private sector and the way they can be used in the public sector. And that is a very important and distinct definition. They can't be conflated. They can't be, Supreme Court rulings that have to do with private-sector NDAs can't be applied to the public sector. In particular, in Florida, which has some of the most stringent public records requirements, and the NDA goes beyond documents, and it goes beyond Sunshine Law public meetings, and goes into discussions among individuals. And I'm assuming that that doesn't apply to me. Thank you.
It doesn't.
I'm sorry?
It doesn't.
Oh, thank you. One of the quotes that you took from the memo that my attorney provided, you said, "as to whether it's unconscionable, may not be easily determined or assessed without court intervention." Well, that's true. That's a partial comment. The rest of the quote is, "The better and stronger argument may lay in relation to the NDA's conflicts with Florida Constitution, Florida law." And in terms of damages being unquantifiable, how does that work in a court of law? In order to have the four elements that usually need for a tort, there have to be damages. If you can't quantify them, such as your reference to some potential damage to the district with regard to software, then how do you determine, this is a rhetorical question, how would you determine whether there were damages at all? Let's see what else I have here. I still, I need to go back to the fact that, oh, in unconscionability, and maybe this is a question for Dr. B. or for staff, 110 staff members signed NDAs. Is that everyone who was asked to sign them? Did anyone refuse to sign one? And if so, what was the result of that? Is there an "or else"?
No individual was told if they, well, if no individual, I make sure my subjects and verbs agree and my pronouns and antecedents agree. No individual was told if he or she does not sign the NDA that he or she would be terminated. No one was told that.
I'm not surprised that they weren't told that.
Well, if you're not surprised they weren't told that, it has not happened either.
The lack of bargaining power, this is from the analysis, "The lack of bargaining power on the part of the board employees may be deemed sufficient proof of procedural So, that was what caused me to look at that aspect of it. Did they feel as if they didn't sign that there would be repercussions? And so, my question is, did anyone not sign?
Did any, well, I'll tell you this. People asked the question, were they going to be terminated if they didn't sign? And the answer was, no one ever told you that. It was never stated.
That's not the answer to the question, though.
Okay, give me, hold on a minute. Give me specifically your question again.
Did anyone refuse to sign? And if so, what was the outcome of that? Was there any follow-up, any anything that happened because they didn't sign?
I believe we had one person. We had three people to not sign. And if they did not sign, nothing has been stated or said to that person since.
Okay, I'm glad to know that. That's helpful. Okay, and just the last thing that I will bring up that I can think of at the moment is this language in the Constitution, because I think this is what was the center point for me. And before I even mention this, I wanted to be, a couple of things to be understood. One is that I felt it was important to raise this issue. There had been so much chatter about it, so much discussion about it. I do feel strongly that NDAs are inappropriate for a public agency. And this one goes well beyond anything I had ever seen or heard of before. I do not believe that this has anything to do with interfering with the administration of this school. The board's job is oversight. And so, because this appears to me to conflict with constitutional structure, I believe that it was my responsibility as a board member to bring it forward to the board for discussion. What the board decides to do is up to the board. I am not taking charge of anything. I am raising an issue that I think was important enough to be discussed. And because of that, I want to finish my portion of all of this with what the Constitution says and the reason that I took this so seriously. I hate to tell you that I've been in this process since this was adopted. So it really stuck in my head. This is from Section 24, Paragraph C of the Florida Constitution. It says, "This section shall be self-executing." And most of us know, the constitutional amendments and provisions are adopted, but then they're usually implemented by statute. And we do have statutory implementation, but in this case, the method of execution was included in the Constitution, which is highly unusual. "The legislature, however, may provide by general law passed by two-thirds vote of each house for the exemption of records from the requirements of subsection A and the exemption of meetings from the requirements of subsection B, provided that such law shall state with specificity the public necessity justifying the exemption and shall be no broader than necessary to accomplish the stated purpose of the law. The legislature shall enact laws governing the enforcement of this section, including the maintenance, control, destruction, dis- the maintenance, control, destruction, disposal, and disposition of records made public by this section, except that each house of the legislature may adopt rules governing the enforcement of this section in relation to records of the legislative branch. Laws enacted pursuant to this subsection shall contain only exemptions from the requirements of subsections A or B and provisions governing the enforcement of this section and shall relate to one subject." If the purpose of this NDA was to prevent an employee from discussing someone's retirement contributions in public, I would like to think that there are ethics rules against doing that or training that the employee would get. But that's not referenced here. The reference is so broad that if there is to be a misinterpretation, it's in the wording of the NDA. So I would, if the district feels strongly that you want to stick with an NDA, I have a couple of requests. One is that you consider maybe making it more specific so that it identifies what the real goal is. Because making a broad blanket statement about keeping budget information private gives, I think, exactly the wrong impression that you might have intended to give. There are other provisions in here that I think are also overly broad. Non-public communications between and among district personnel. If it's not confidential and it's not privileged, then, and it's not a matter of public record, then it's just conversation. And so I think we just need to be very careful how we appear to be limiting discussions and information among and with staff and our interactions with the public. That was why I wanted to bring this up, and I appreciate the discussion. I do wish that we had, that the board had had a better opportunity to know about this and discuss it before it was done. There are boards, as I understand it, not very many, very few school boards in the state use these with their own employees. They use them with contractors and temporary employees and things like that. But generally with staff, they don't, or with full-time staff. So there isn't a lot to go on. But it might not be a bad idea for us to adopt a policy about how these should be used. And that would be a board decision, and that would provide us some guidelines for any future use of an NDA. And thank you.
Mr. Wolf, do you want to address the part about the damages? Really, the NDA really talked about damages not being what we want, and injunction is more so.
Right. So, yeah, in a court case, if you have damages that can't be monetized, calculated to an exact number, the case law would allow for an injunction to prevent release of that confidential And that's why that language is in the NDA regarding, that would allow for the injunction because the damages can't be calculated to a specific amount.
Can I ask another question about that? Because I know, two weeks ago, when I first broached this subject, the issue of software was what was used as one of the examples. Is it possible to narrow the reach of the NDA to the people who are working on things like that, rather than broadly including something like that in something that everybody signs? Random question.
If it's okay, I was going to say something, but go ahead, Mr. Clone.
I personally, and I'll restate what I said before, I believe this, as stated by Mr. Wolf, falls under the authority of the superintendent, and there's really no decision-making on behalf of the board on any of these topics as they fall under organizational. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Brosmer, I too do feel that this falls under the superintendent as a part of the day-to-day running of the district. Here's what I personally have learned over the years, since I'm on year thirty-nine, of being a part of Volusia County Schools. I was required, when I moved into federal programs and grants, which is the federal programs and grants piece of Volusia County Schools, not, you know, there's an entire federal programs and grants office in Volusia County Schools because they manage all of the different grant funding that comes in, like Title I, Part A, Part C, Part D, Title II, Title III, Title IV, Title IX, the IDA pieces, and then any of the other smaller grants that come based on schools' letter grades. I was required as an employee in four Volusia County Schools under that department each year to go to fraud training. I didn't get an option. I had to attend fraud training. It was part of what was required under my job. And during the fraud training, they would go over cases that had just happened that year where people had committed fraud. And believe it or not, in the state of Florida, we have our own federal fraud office that is located down in Pine Hills. And unless something has recently changed, if you commit fraud of $10,000, you're going to federal prison. And I had to sign an NDA in that position because in that position, I had access to a lot of information that I wasn't free to share. I wasn't free to share the status of parents that were on free and reduced lunch, or what their income, you know, status was. I wasn't free to share because I did the budgets each year for each of the schools. Like, they put in what they wanted. You know, I want to hire this person to be an academic coach or an intervention teacher, and I want a parent liaison, and then I want this much in tutoring. I wasn't allowed to share the salary. Like, I had the salary information and the benefits and all that, but it wasn't my place to go out and say, I'll use Mr. Clone, Mr. Clone, you know, is making $62,000, but he's also doing this for tutoring and that. But all of that fed through, and I was responsible for it. I never had a problem signing it, and partially because I knew what the laws were and I wasn't going to break the law. But what I will tell you, and I've said this my entire career, we can have a law on something, and we've seen it happen. With some of the state laws that are out there or federal laws, we've seen people not follow them. And what they do is they shrug their shoulders and they say, "I didn't know." And I've always, this has been my take since I was a teacher. And there's trainings that teachers even have to go to that they're not signing an NDA, but they sign that they understand what they were trained on and that they will follow the rules for it. My thing is, you want to make sure someone understands the seriousness and doesn't cross the line. Because especially when teacher-pay-teacher came up, you know, there's things that have been created in Volusia County Schools while people are on the clock being paid. That's not yours to go, you know, make a profit off of. There's a lot of software that, when I was working summer programs, the software people here created for me, but that didn't mean they could go sell it to another county. And I truly feel that if you want to ensure that people stay within the law, you put down, you can't do these things, or you must follow these guidelines. And I've never had a problem signing them, and I've always said, you want them to follow it, type it up, make them sign it. Because then we won't have lawsuits that come back to us because people shrug their shoulders and say, "I didn't know I had to follow that."
This is just from my own information. When you signed those NDAs, what was the term of their effectiveness? Because the term of this one is three years after the person is no longer employed. So was your term extended beyond your term of employment also?
I actually don't remember. I apologize. I mean, it's been a while since I signed one. I don't remember. But what I did know, I just never had a problem signing it because I went to any trainings required. I paid attention. I read the laws that I had to follow, and I had no intention of breaking those laws. But not everybody does that. And I've seen it happen, and we've dealt with lawsuits over the years because I don't know why people open their mouth sometimes and share information about somebody's, you know, what they do with their money, or, you know, share information about students that can't be shared. I mean, we have, I get parent calls or emails all the time that they want to know, what was the outcome? What happened to the student that did this? I can't tell you. You have no right to it. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
We have people, though, that, for some reason, will break that and tell them.
Well, I never questioned the aspects of the NDA that are clearly illegal, and we already know that, that are very specific, either by state or federal law. Where I was concerned, am concerned, is the paragraphs that I think go beyond that. And that was why I raised all of this. I greatly appreciate the discussion. I think it's been helpful, whether anybody else does or not, but I do appreciate the discussion.
Any other board member comments?
Adjourn.
Hold. Yeah.
Got a motion?
So, board members, Mr. Clone, you brought up a point, and I reiterated that, that you said this is part of the superintendent's job role and responsibility of day-to-day operations. I would like to hear from the other board members, where they stand on that topic. So Ms. Thompson?
I mean, I agree. I think there's lanes, that the board, and there are things that come before us, you know, policy being a major one. But that kind of stuff falls under organization. That's why we pick the superintendent, and if it doesn't work out, then we, as we've seen years past, find a new superintendent. But that's, I mean, if we were to go around and say, start nitpicking at this, and then it could lead to something else, and then, you know, all five of us are looking at every single aspect of her day-to-day, and then, I mean, that's a lot of time, and there's five of us that have to agree on one board decision. So that's my thoughts.
Ms. Goodrich?
Are we following Robert's rules? Because Mr. Clone made a motion to adjourn.
We don't.
So do we not do that now? I just want to make sure we're following in the right path.
He said it, but this discussion is not over yet.
But doesn't a vote follow? I'm a newbie to Robert's rules. I'm trying to follow them as best as I can, so.
Yes, there is.
There should be a vote. He made a motion to adjourn.
Okay. So is there a second that's ready to adjourn this meeting before the discussion is over?
Second.
Hmm?
Second.
Second of the motion.
You asked for a second.
Okay, then, let's call for all that wish to go ahead and end the workshop today at 4:17 PM. Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? I'm going to say nay, simply because I think we should have finished the conversation, but the motion passes and the workshop is over, and we will be back in here at 4:30 to start the school board meeting.
Sorry, if we're going to do Robert's rules, we got to do them. Like, that's the deal.